All right, so this is going to call the meeting to order of the Leominster School Committee on Monday, August 10th. Could everyone please stand and say the pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God.
I'm sorry, I can't hear everybody.
We're all.
Justice for all. Sorry, I do apologize to everyone in the community because it's very difficult because I have a black screen. So at this time, we're going to open up the public forum. So please state your name and address for the record. And I do apologize, I'm just going to quickly read the school committee statement. The committee represents the needs of all Leominster Public Schools students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocol, face our decision upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Leominster. All right, thank you very much. So if anybody wishes to address-
Eileen, this is Dean. We should take a voice attendance, please.
You certainly can do that. Dean?
Present.
Are you here?
Present.
Mike?
Present.
Sue?
Present.
Brandon?
Present.
Ron?
Present.
Isabel?
Present.
Peter?
Present.
Melissa?
Present.
Okay, everyone is here. Okay, so the public portion of this is open. If you would wish to speak, please say your name and address for the committee, please.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, they can. Go ahead, state your name and address, please.
Hi, yes, my name is Linda Gordon Cohen. I live at 949 Union Street, Leominster. I respectfully ask that the school board please reconsider the hybrid option because it makes the most sense for our community. It allows for face-to-face interactions for students and teachers at the beginning of the year when it is the most important. Right now, our COVID numbers throughout Massachusetts are stable. We should use this window of opportunity before the flu season begins and before the winter weather gets cold to allow our students to have a safe face-to-face interaction with their teachers so an initial bond can occur. Students and teachers can get to know each other at first in person as a base for the rest of the school year. Also, there will be smaller class sizes in the in-person classes every other week, which will allow for more meaningful interactions with teachers and students. The reason why the in-school option did not work in other places such as Israel, Georgia, and Florida is because they did not have any safety precautions or restrictions in place. 100% of the students attended classes with no emphasis on social distancing, hand washing, or mask wearing. When safety restrictions were in place, like in communities in Europe, there was no discernible increase in the infection rate. In Massachusetts, we are approaching dealing with COVID in a vigilant manner, having students six feet apart, enforcing mask wearing, and having hand sanitizer available throughout the schools. This is a testament to all of our hard work our superintendent and administration has done to put these plans into place. Therefore, I respectfully ask you to let the community try the hybrid option as recommended by our superintendent and our governor and to allow the students the best opportunity to thrive under these unprecedented circumstances within our lifetimes. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you very much. Would somebody else like to address the committee?
Eileen, this is Jen Kiper. Eileen, Jen Kiper.
Go ahead, Jen.
So Jen Kiper, 104 Center Road, Pittsburgh. So as you all know, I am an educator in Leominster. Creative, dedicated, passionate, caring, grateful, innovative, excited, motivated, compassionate, flexible, committed, driven. These are the characteristics commonly utilized to describe educators. On March 16, educators were presented with a situation that no one had ever encountered before. We were tasked with teaching students remotely with no formal training and without the support of our colleagues. Nothing about this task was easy. There were daily struggles to get technology to cooperate with us, to get students involved, to support parents the best we could, and to continue the education of all of our students while being mindful of their social-emotional needs as they were physically distant from classmates and teachers. Creative and innovative ways were utilized to maintain our communities from both an educational and social-emotional standpoint. Staff participated in school-wide videos, messages to students, virtual meetings were held, phone calls were made, home visits were completed. It wasn't perfect, but in an emergency, all educators rose to the challenge and did the best they could. We were being described as heroes across social media platforms. The summer has been filled with uncertainty around what school will look like in August. Hours have been spent by educators taking advantage of professional development aimed at improving remote learning. Hours have been spent by educators having conversations with each other and administrators about how best to move forward. Surveys have been completed to assess the needs and desires of families and staff. Regardless of efforts to get live data, the situation changes by the day, and opinions and viewpoints change with the ever-changing environment. A decision was made to begin the school year remotely. Educators were no longer heroes. Social media platforms were flooded with anger directed at teachers. Make no mistake, regardless of the model utilized to educate our students, we will continue to be the professionals that we have always been. Who we are and how we strive to make every child successful is not going to change based on the model utilized. Be patient with us, continue to trust us. We have the same desires our community. We want all staff and students to be safe and remain healthy. The characteristics utilized to describe educators shouldn't change because of the chosen model. Our commitment remains to educate all students in our care and to prepare them for the next steps of their lives while building the relationships that we all know to be critical to their success. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jen. Would somebody else like to address the committee? Please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record.
Hello?
Go right ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Larry Zoraro, and I live at 8 Brentwood Drive in Leominster, Mass. Thank you so much for your time tonight. I know you're making some very, very difficult choices, and I appreciate the time and effort you're putting into this. I just hope that moving forward, that classes such as arts, music, PE, language, and all the other, you know, special classes that are commonly forgotten are remembered when these discussions are going on. I know when there's an event, the music department is there. I know, I spent 17 years in the system. Every time there's an event in this city, the music department is there without complaint, usually on a weekend or evening. Please make sure these classes do not just get forgotten about. The theater program at Leominster High School cannot be forgotten about. That was my first statement. My second comment I want to make, and this is something I've said before, the school committee and the mayor need to get on the same page. The divide is so great right now. Please, get in a room, solve these problems that you have with each other. I know you, none of you want to see anyone fail. So when you guys are fighting with each other, it's not good. It's not a good look for the community. Please, 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 please think and figure something out so that you guys can work together. It will only help students and staff. And I also hope that more people are being brought back every single day. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Would somebody else like to address the committee? Please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Eileen, Bonnie Bud.
Hi, Bonnie, go ahead.
Hi, Bonnie Bud, 321 Prospect Street. Good evening. I am asking for your support in providing our high-needs and most-risk students a true supportive reopening plan. I call attention to our local and state COVID numbers. They're not indicative of a surge, as it was thought was occurring and stated at the July 30th meeting. It was expressed, if we did not see a peak in numbers, which we are not, that the hybrid model to get our at-risk population in the building would be explored. That time is now. Most of our high-need students are hands-on visual learners who require direct in-person instruction. Remote learning will absolutely fail them. On-site services should include training on the Chromebooks and iPads which will be used to access their educational materials. Perhaps onsite pairs, tutors, and aides while a teacher remotely controls a lesson for those who wish to remain remote would work. This is a must. What if we face another full shutdown like the spring of 2020? Our students would not be properly trained or ready for success. We must be realistic with at-home learners. The synchronous schedule as laid out is not healthy physically or mentally. Many studies stress the limitation of screen time. Therefore, it's imperative we adopt a more holistic and asynchronous approach. Also, I call attention to the district's working families who will not be able to access and support their child on these platforms until late evening. I suggest an exploration of utilizing tutors and pairs in the evening hours to be set up to support those needs. Privacy concerns exist around the video-on request as it will lead to unnecessary stress and anxiety on the student and lead to cyberbullying which results in trauma. One last area of concern is our ventilation systems at Fallbrook and the high school, where some committee members express concerns as to why we should not return to the building. I learned the work requested be performed from those studies was near completion at Fallbrook, and neither the high school or Fallbrook had any areas labeled as off-limits. I'm wondering why these documents were never presented at school committee and why there is still concern about returning to those sites. In conclusion, I ask for your unbiased full support for both our superintendent and director of special education as they present to you this evening on fall reopening plans. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Bonnie. Would somebody else like to address the committee?
Shannon Payette.
Great, go ahead.
66 Clinton Road, Sterling. Good evening. This will be my 20th year teaching in Leominster. This has been an uncertain and anxious-ridden journey we have been on for months. With school approaching quickly, I can honestly say I have never felt so disheartened, frustrated, and yet scared. In these trying times, I looked to my leadership to help guide me through steps and expectations, yet nothing has been forthcoming. The word transparent keeps coming up. The dictionary states that transparent means having thoughts, feelings, or motives that are easily perceived. How can I understand the motives when there is then no discussion or information given? The three plans that were presented two weeks ago were seen by teachers the day before. The schedule you are looking at tonight was seen when it went public to the community. When we had to go remote suddenly with no notice in March, we rose to the occasion. We changed our lessons, made ourselves available at all hours to support the home as best we could, and for many of us, learned how to use technology as our main modality of teaching. We had to do that, there was no other option. Yet here we are, August 10th, and not much further along, and still feeling unprepared. Teachers love our kids and want to do everything we can to make them feel safe, secure, and able, but we need your help. We will only be able to do this with all of us working together. This means we need to start sharing ideas, having difficult discussions, and listening to the voices of our community. We need to stop casting blame and move forward where we come up with actual steps to support our children in this community to the best of our ability. Actual step suggestions: survey teachers and parents about questions to help facilitate best learning more remotely; survey staff on working conditions; begin negotiations; make a list of building repairs and present them about what needs to be done in each building to make them safe; look at hiring back more teachers so that we have better class sizes; put out written communication weekly of what has been actually accomplished and things to be done; be transparent. One of my favorite sayings in math is "solve it another way." In order for this to happen, we have to hear viewpoints completely different than our own and try to understand them. This helps us see more than one perspective to get a better understanding of the concept. I end by begging you to allow teachers and the community to have a voice, share information that helps us all understand better. Please, let's work together to solve it another way. Our children and community deserve that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Would someone else like to address the committee?
Frank Cohen. Frank Cohen, 949 Union Street in Leominster. And I'm going to be followed by my son, so we're going to each have common time. One following the other, please. The last three weekly reports on 14-day trends from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health COVID-19 dashboards show the following. No change to decrease in reported COVID-19 cases in Leominster and its border municipalities of Westminster, Lunenburg, Lancaster, Sterling, and Pittsburgh. In the last two weeks, there have been 40 reported cases in a population of 115,000 that is just under three cases per day. Leominster specifically has been decreased, no change, and no change in reported cases over the last three documented 14-day periods with an average of 1.2 cases per day over the last four weeks. Leominster and its border communities in terms of virus control surpassed European nations that have reopened schools safely with no school-centered surges. These data trends show a remote-only district-wide reopening to be an overkill in virus mitigation. The governor and Betsy Commissioner made crystal clear that COVID-19, quote, "local conditions" are critical in shaping district proposals for reopening schools. Leominster's proposal to start remote-only fails this critical test. I'm going to focus on K through 5 because I find this group to be the most at risk for remote-only education and yet the least at risk in terms of viral incidence and spread. And I have two children in college and high school, and so it's not bad about me personally. But this age group of 5 to 10-year-olds has, relatively speaking, the most resistance to the virus, the most negligible role in transmission of the virus, and yet are the most vulnerable to developmental delays for remote-only education. And I'll now pass on to my son.
Hi, my name is Matthew Cohen, and I am a sophomore at Leominster High School. Continued social isolation eliminates the collaborative and creative elements of learning so critical to this age group. It also harms them emotionally and creating psychological issues. This age group's combination of epidemiological, mental, and psychological features makes it an ideal target for hybrid solutions. The remote-only schedule the IC is impossible for 5 to 10-year-olds to navigate and attend on their own without another adult sitting by their side for the duration of the school day. You must consider the stress that it could put on parents and caregivers of one or more children. And how about children in unstable homes? On the other side of the screen, we cannot assume that career-long classroom teachers will have achieved sufficient mastery of digital pedagogy and online delivery of curriculum. And how about the nurturing from elementary educators? Our students are essential business. Now is the time for innovation, response to their emotional and cognitive needs in balance with virus mitigation. Now is not the time to eliminate risk from educational settings, which is impossible and which logically leads us down the path of waiting for a widely distributed vaccine. If we keep following the remote-only model and its assumptions, schools could be shut down for two years, not just two months. Let reason, science, and ingenuity not fear and emotion shape our proposals and force of actions for reopening Leominster schools. Thank you for your attention.
Very much. Would someone else like to address the committee?
Rob Bolpe, 20 Shady Lane, Leominster. Thank you. Follow-up to Frank's point. As I said, I agree with him that the K through 5 is the most vulnerable group. They should be spread out throughout the district to allow social distancing. I don't see any reason why they can't go back fully if they're spread out throughout the district. You know, we listened to the opening of this meeting, and you were all struggling with your platforms. I ask you, how do you expect a 6-year-old and an 8-year-old to navigate the web without assistance? Thank you. A meal to my wife.
Hello, my name is Caitlin Bolpe, 20 Shady Lane.
Caitlin, can you just hold on one second? Whoever is ending in 68, could you please put yourself on mute so we can put your voice clearly? Go ahead, Caitlin, sorry about that.
Thank you. So my name is Caitlin Bolpe, 20 Shady Lane. I wanted to make a, I wanted to say that I appreciate the couple of you on the school committee that responded to my emails. However, it is disrespectful that the other members have not. I am a Leominster resident, a parent of Leominster Public School children, and a tax-paying citizen. I deserve a response if my emails. With that said, a couple of you have mentioned that you realize that going virtual is going to be difficult for many families. I don't think you realize just how difficult, just how difficult this will be. Most of you do not have children in the school system, and you won't be affected. This remote decision that we are being faced with is going to negatively affect our lives and well-being. My husband will need to go on leave, and when that runs out, I will need to. We are both essential workers. Also, our children are very young. My 8-year-old is on IEP and needs one-on-one attention in person with a teacher. He also has ADHD, and it is difficult to pull him back in for his score. My youngest son is going to be six and hasn't quite grasped how to read yet. This is going to be an enormous challenge for my husband and I to coach him through via the remote model. It truly feels as though the members that voted to go virtual do not care about these obstacles. Governor Baker has stated that the COVID numbers do not support all virtual learning. I do not understand why we are going against this as a community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would someone else like to address the committee? Please unmute yourself and state your name and address.
Point of order for a minute, please. Point of order. Point of order.
What does that mean? We're in the middle of the open forum?
All right. I realize that, but this is a point of order. There are a number of people communicating to me through various resources, telling me that they are trying to get on and they cannot get on to the meeting. And I don't know if there's a capacity problem or a limit to how many people can be on, but I just want it noted for the record that there are a number of people trying to get on to the meeting but cannot. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Dean. Could you please continue? I'm sorry you were interrupted, but with your public comment.
Hi, this is Wendy Anderson, 104 Harrison Street in Leominster. I just wanted to say, first off, thank you all because I know that this is not easy on any of you and those who voted for remote and those who voted for hybrid, so I appreciate your attention. I would just like to kind of remind everybody where we are budgetary-wise before everybody jumps on you all for our remote model. Whatever model we go back to school, we need our staff, and we need safe transportation. And it doesn't matter what the COVID numbers are in the state if we don't have the staff and transportation to safely social distance our students who do go in person. So I just wanted, you know, everybody to remember that it's not just safety in numbers, it's having the proper staff to support our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Would someone else like to address the committee?
Yes, please.
Go right ahead.
My name is Sarah Gates. I'm at 25 Colonial Drive in Leominster. I am a lifetime resident of the city. I'm a product of the Leominster Public Schools. I have a parent of two students in the Leominster Public Schools, and I have taught in Leominster for 18 years at Francis Drake, even when it was healthy. In order for any remote or in-person learning to be successful, we need all staff to be hired back as soon as possible. Class size and student-teacher ratio are important regardless of how learning takes place, so please continue to bring all of our teachers back who were laid off. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would someone else like to address the committee? Please unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Karen. Hello?
All right, so I heard two of you go first. Would the person with the last two numbers, 81, please go first, and the other person can go immediately afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Lori Weck, 68 Scenic Drive. There's been a lot of question around the community about what is going to be happening with the IEP members, special needs, CTEI, LCE, how these members are going to be addressed with any type of remote learning, whether it be hybrid or be completely remote. And there has not been any information forthcoming as to how these people are going to be addressed. I did have a call this afternoon with Dr. Dzinski, and he did address a little bit of that with me personally, but I don't feel like any of that has been addressed as a whole to the community. And I think that needs to be something that is brought forth and more people understand how that is going to be done. I feel like there has been no transparency as far as that information has been, and I can't personally be responsible for taking the information I've gotten from Dr. Dzinski. And I feel as though the information that he has is not fully the information that should be out there as well. So I feel like more communication needs to be brought forth, and the information that possibly is out there needs to be shared with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Could the other person who just was about to speak go forward now?
Sure. Eileen, this is Carrie Nuthworthy from 95th Street. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go ahead, Carrie.
Okay, thank you. So sort of what Lori was just discussing, I wanted to talk about equitable access to education specifically for special education students, ELL students, VOPPEC students, you know, through trauma, and anybody else who is in a, is in a situation where it's difficult for them to access their education. Now is the time more than ever that we need to lift these students as we would have in pre-COVID times, but we really need to make sure they don't fall through the cracks since we've already lost the spring from last year. And although it was never the educational system's responsibility to be childcare for any family, we all know it's sort of an unintended consequence because there's nothing else that we have in our nation to address childcare. And as was already mentioned, unfortunately, many families are going to have to have one person find, you know, take leave or do other things that could, you know, impact their ability to feed their families, pay their bills so that they can monitor their child at home. I also wanted to say, I know we keep saying sort of that we're in unprecedented times, but just want to remind all of us, we've been here since March, so maybe we could always sort of be moving forward, looking to the future. And as elected officials in our community, we now look to you to help us educate our students. And we ask that you hear our voices, maybe in more surveys, maybe on committees, other ways. Let's think outside the box. I know a lot of Leominster residents have a lot to contribute, and we want to help make things better. And the last big piece for me is the physical and mental health safety of our students, families, and educators. I want to talk a little bit about being trauma-informed because you don't need to be a clinician to be trauma-informed. It really just means that educators and other individuals need to have flexibility. I heard it talked about that kids shouldn't be in their pajamas, and although I completely get that, families are struggling, kids are struggling, and it's a thing as a-
The two minutes were up. Okay. Thank you, Carrie. Your two minutes are up. Would anybody else like to address the committee? Again, if anybody would like to address the committee, please unmute yourself. Go right ahead.
Hi, my name is Dorissa, 112 Southern Street, Leominster. My daughter and my son attend public schools, and I appreciate everyone's work. I can't ima, I don't know what it's like to have your job, so I would never judge. But I just wonder why, if you were looking at hybrid, remote, and in-person learning, why another remote option wasn't given, such as having flexibility? The teachers rose to the occasion. I had free experiences, and they thought outside the box. They recorded themselves and sent videos and did it in a safe way, and that allowed me to keep my job and teach my children on hours that were for me since I had no other options. And I just wonder why that wasn't considered in another remote option? Because you very well know that everyone is struggling to keep their jobs. That's a very big reality, and what is the backlash going to look like in a year from now? I mean, it's already going to look bad. So I just wonder why another remote option wasn't considered or at least expressed in maybe a survey form or some kind of way to ask us how we were going to come together as a community to make this work, because this is our new normal. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Would anybody else like to address the committee? Please unmute yourself. If anybody else would like to address the committee, please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record.
Hello?
Go right ahead.
My name is Peyton Beck, and I live at 25 Grand Street. I'm going to be a junior this year, and I'd just like to say that I've been talking to many of my friends about this, and we all have similar concerns. Coronavirus has caused us all to have a lot of mental health issues, like depression and things like that, and the lack of in-person contact and the fact that a lot of us can't learn online is making us struggle a lot. I have a 504 and I'm in trade, and I feel like going into this year, like me and my friends who, a lot of them are also in trade and a lot of them who also have 504s or IEPs, we would struggle a lot, like going back to school without incurring learning. And so I'd just like you guys to consider the trade and specialized kids and how coronavirus and being home is impacting the mental health of a lot of people, especially in high school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see we have somebody waiting with the last two digits of 30. If you could go ahead and address the committee? If you could go ahead and address the committee? Would someone else like to address the committee? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello? Hello?
Go ahead.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Hi. My name is Tina Allen. I'm at 55 Braga and Lemonster. I have an incoming eighth grader and I'm a little bit concerned that neither the survey that the parents were provided or the vote, or the vote that the committee made for full remote, neither, at neither time were we provided with any idea of what remote would look like. I think we all thought it was going to look a little bit more like last year and it, it does not seem to be. So I'm concerned about that transparency. I think that was necessary to create a very well-educated vote and for the survey results to be accurate. I'm a full-time working parent. Last year was difficult and stressful, but necessary. We did, I think we all did really well. But I just don't see this continuing. I have a very high achiever who I can't help him in many of his subjects. He has surpassed me at the age of 13 and I am more than proud. He needs his teachers. He needs to be able to interact in school. Full remote will not provide that. It does provide the full, the social distancing needed for COVID, the in-person connection to new teachers and classmates and with his school in general. It would remove the constant need to sit in front of a computer and do his work and feel a little bit disconnected with community. It would help maintain and continue his advancing class status and as I said, provide a sense of community. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the committee? Please unmute yourself, state your name and address.
Hello?
Go right ahead, please.
My name is Cindy Walter. I live at 505 Johnny Appleseed Lane. My son is nine years old. He goes to Francis Drake. And I would say that a lot of people did a lot of work this spring to make the education happen. I would also say, having spoken to a number of other parents, that it, there was not consistency in the, in what was delivered and how it was received. I was fortunate that I could take the spring off from work, which I had to do. I'm expecting that we have a better approach this semester. Not criticizing, I have volunteered in writing to the superintendent to volunteer in any way that I can to support whatever the model is. But I think that we need a better model, as a lot of people have said, to make sure that these younger kids are, and I'm sure all of the kids, but the younger kids in the grade schools are able to fully learn doing more than staring at a computer. Thank you.
Thank you. Would somebody else like to address the committee? Again, would someone like to address the committee? Please unmute yourself and speak now.
I had to, it was my turn to talk.
Can someone please go forward and speak? Again, would anybody like to address the committee? Please do so at this time. Unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record.
Yes, I will. Can I be heard?
Yes, you can. Please go ahead.
Excellent. My name is Maria McNamara. I'm at 549 Prospect Street and I am just simply here to reiterate that I agree with all of the parents that have spoken this evening. I have two children in the Lemonster Public Schools, one going into third grade, one on an IEP. And I'm very concerned about my children being able to learn, especially my daughter on an IEP. I think we really need to focus and I just agree with everything that's already been said. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the committee? Again, if anybody would like to address the committee, please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, can I?
Go right ahead.
My name is Leisha Santiago. My address is 189 Thru Street. My concern is that I have two special needs children with IEPs and remote learning does not work for them at all. And my concern is that if a school is doing virtual only and offering no in-person instruction, and that's exactly what my child requires, then it would be the school not complying with their duty to provide a FAP and even make one available. So how does this get addressed and what viable options will there be in order to help special needs children like my children have a free and appropriate public education?
Thank you. Would someone else like to address the committee? Please unmute yourself at this time.
Hi, Lonnie Perry, Rutland, Massachusetts. I was just wondering, will ventilation be addressed and fixed prior to attending school if we do go back to a hybrid model? But I'm shocked that in the past week, we watched other states open up and we've seen district after district in those states close down immediately. Today, Kentucky, tonight shut down the entire state for, for learning and they'll be doing all of their classes remotely until late September. I'm shocked that with COVID present now, we're considering opening at all when in March we shut down without any COVID present at all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to address the committee?
I'd like to address the committee if I could.
Please go forward.
Okay. My name is Amanda Lawton. I live at 202 Farm Hill Road in Lemonster. I grew up in Lemonster K-2 High School. I currently work in the district as a interventionist and I have a daughter who will be entering kindergarten at one of our public school buildings. And I, I'm having a hard time with just knowing from both sides of the fence, being a parent in the district as well as a school employee, there is no good option. And I want to commend the school committee for voting and for hearing all of this, both positive and negative. It is not an easy job that you guys have and it's definitely not an easy job that any of the school employees have at all. Obviously, we want nothing more than to be back in the schools with our students, with your children. At this point, I don't feel comfortable with that. And I know a lot of staff members, whether or not they have kids in the system, feel comfortable with that either. We're stuck between a rock and a hard place. And as some people have pointed out, we closed schools in March and there were no cases or deaths in Massachusetts at that point and we have them now. And I think it would be irresponsible of us to go back into the buildings with the knowledge that that could happen, that we could lose students or staff members or family members of students or staff members simply because people want to push back into the school. And I, I get it. I do. I want nothing more than my child to be in school, learning with her friends and getting that full educational experience. But it's not safe, in my opinion. And I really, again, appreciate the thought that's been put into all these decisions. It's not easy. I don't envy the job that the school committee has. I just want to put it out there that teachers and school staff members are often parents as well and we all need to think about each other as well as ourselves and as well as our students and our family members. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to address the committee? Please do so now. Again, is there anybody who would like to address the committee during our public forum? Please unmute yourself and state your name and address.
Yes, I would like to address.
Go right ahead.
My name is Robert Lee. I live at 24 Stern's Ave in Lemonster. I am a parent. I have two children in Lemonster. I have one at high school who's in the, who's in CTE. I am also a teacher. I've been at the high school for 13 years. So I'm, and I'm a special education teacher. So I'm kind of on all sides. And I just want to remind everybody that I agree, there really is no good solution here. And I want, just so we understand, like as a parent and as a teacher, like all the parents and all the teachers, we're on the same side. My job is much easier in the, and remote learning is hard on me, it's hard on my children. I can't imagine how much more difficult it is if I had very young children. These struggles are real and I'm very sympathetic to these problems. However, hopefully we can do something different where if we think of last year as maybe suddenly remote learning or suddenly distance learning and this is remote, it should look different. And one of the reasons I'm hoping that we can all come to some sort of understanding, at least to be on the same page where we all want the same thing for the kids. And I'm hoping that we can set things up from the start if we go with this virtual learning because I don't see a scenario in which we can make it through the entire year, even under the best, most optimistic, if we have a thousand people in this high school, half the number, a few of those people on day one are going to be having the virus, spreading it through the building just by math. And it's just a matter of time. And I'm sympathetic to the mental health. I don't want to have to tell a kid three weeks in that one of his grandparents has gotten sick and he feels guilty because he might have brought it home. I don't want to watch coworkers get sick. I don't want to watch kids get sick. I just want to remind everybody, we're all on the same page. I'm a teacher. I'm a parent. I go to Market Basket. I see all kids I've had. I've been there long enough. Some of the kids I've had have kids of their own. And I know this is difficult for everybody. And again, I'm very sympathetic to the overwhelming. Absolutely.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the committee? Please do so now.
Yes. This is Mary Beth Flanagan at 217 Union Street.
Go ahead.
So I just want to acknowledge that while ending the, the last school year during, in the last three months was difficult, it was very doable given the established relationships that the kids had with their teachers and the teachers had with their children. I have one out of three children left in the school system. She's entering high school in the fall and I'm very concerned with the transition into high school without her having the ability to make the connections to her teachers and the teachers to their students. And while I completely understand that there is no right or wrong answer here, it's a very difficult decision to make, I'm strongly an advocate for the kids having some way, shape or form to have an in-person relationship with their teachers going into a new school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the committee? Once again, if anybody would like to address the committee during the open forum, please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record. Again, if anybody would like to address the committee, please do so now. And this will be the last and final time that I will be asking. If anybody would like to address the committee, please unmute yourself and do so now. Otherwise, we will close this portion of our meeting. Having no one else come forward, the open forum of our meeting is now closed. Superintendent, we, are there any communications?
Yes, we received, and you all received, one on Saturday, August 8th from a group that's called the Lemonster Working Parents Advocacy. The members of this group, as well as some additional residents, have signed a petition that they've brought forth. When I looked today, there were over 700 signatures on it in support of in-school learning for the upcoming year. And they are asking you to reconsider and revote regarding the full remote learning module decision and to move forward.
So I just want to remind folks and the public that in order for a reconsideration of the vote, somebody who voted in the majority would need to rescind their vote. At this point in time, no one has come forward and asked me or informed me that they plan to do that. I can open this up right now. If anybody in the majority who voted for remote learning in the fall would like to rescind their vote, this is the time to do so. At this time, no one has come forward. And so at this point in time, there is no reconsideration for the vote. All right. Any other communications, Superintendent?
No, that was the only one.
Okay. We'll move on to the superintendent report, please.
I'd like to suspend my report and move right into the remote plan in the presentation.
Thank you. Why don't we do that then?
Okay, great. So I listened to many of the comments and I appreciate everyone looking for more answers. We are as well. We have chipped into our remote plan and as excited as everyone is, we know we start school on September 14th and as leaders, we must protect, we defend, we direct, and we need to create some order. And it's time for not only our district, but our city to combine forces and help not only our students, but our families and our staff. And we have been so reactive to COVID that it is now time to be responsive. We know better, therefore we will do better. And listening in the opening comments, somebody mentioned how teachers really have been in coursework all summer, knowing that remote was a possibility. So they have been in workshops and webinars and reaching out and sharing materials. So we are better informed and we are better prepared. So the perspective of teaching and learning is forever change. So now we have to change and we have to be mindful of not only our beliefs, but our behaviors regarding education and the resiliency of our children. Tonight, there are many components. We have our entire administrative team here. So whatever the questions are, somebody should be able to answer them. But please remember, in the technical plan, we talk about the who, the what and the where, but the biggest piece in education is why? Why are we doing this? And why are we spending every waking moment thinking of a detail beyond a detail beyond a detail? Simple answer, this is what our children deserve. So through tonight's presentations, it's quite comprehensive. We'll cover a gamut of pieces. We just ask that you hold questions until the end and then we can open it up if that's okay with the committee.
So I will just, Superintendent, I was just going to say that we will be giving each, you know, member an opportunity to ask questions when you're done.
Okay, great.
So remember, we'll get a chance.
Okay, great. Thank you. So do you want to ask now or do you want to wait?
I think we would like to hear the presentation and then we can.
Okay, we're going to start with Lorraine Muscatola. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for inviting us to the meeting. I'm going to share my screen and I do have a few slides. Hopefully you'll be able to see them. Eileen, can you see this slide?
We cannot. It looked like it was going to come up and then it disappeared.
I can see it.
I can. I can see it, Lorraine. Okay. So we're going to speak to these slides. Certainly.
I can see it. I had pinned, I had pinned Lorraine and all I saw was her face. And all of a sudden, when I unpinned her, her, all of a sudden it came up. So maybe that's what we have to do. You know what I'm saying? About the pinning?
Yep. Yep.
Thank you. So the, the plan that we are looking at was part of our overall comprehensive plan. And tonight, we'd like to provide additional details that were not given at the last meeting. The, the details that we have for the remote learning are front and center on our district's webpage. So if you, if the people who are interested for even more details than we shared tonight, they can go to the district webpage and right in the middle of the front page is the remote learning plan details. This, along with the rest of our plan, was developed in collaboration with our building-based administration, with families through focus groups that were very well attended and through a survey, and also with our teachers and staff through a survey that was done electronically. We were certainly all caught flat-footed in March. And as Superintendent Deacon had said, this plan is not that reactive plan. It is a very proactive and has been developed, again, with all this collaboration. There are multiple opportunities every day going. There are multiple opportunities every day going forward with our plan for teachers and students to interact remotely. We have paid close attention to the core content areas, ELA, mathematics, science, and social studies, but there are components for fine arts and for physical education in every week's plan, as well as enrichment and intervention. We have paid close attention as well to our special populations, and there will be what we're calling synchronous or just-in-time opportunities every single day for small group. There are special education students, our English language learners, and you'll hear more about them from Renee Koska and Kim Woodford. Also, our specialized programs at the high school level, CTEI and LCE. The CTEI administration, Dan Beishant and Russ Esaw, have been collaborating with the Department of Education at the state level and are working very closely with the staff to create a rigorous, robust remote learning plan for the CTEI students. John Van Selette, who's the principal at our Lemmester Center for Excellence, has also been working with staff and with the district administration for the schedule that will be personalized for those students. Students will also be moving from screen time with teachers to other instructional opportunities throughout the day and throughout the week. While we will have a structured school day, it will by no means be completely online. Students will not be spending their five hours a day on the computer. Some of the examples of the asynchronous piece that we're discussing include project-based learning, virtual field trips, online interventions, and reading and journaling at home. We definitely understand that we are all in this together, and just as we were when we were face-to-face back in the day, we are expecting that all members of our community will have a part and will have responsibilities in the success of this plan. In the plan, these responsibilities are outlined in three categories, and you see them here on the screen: organization of the learning environment, instructional design and delivery, and student success. So for example, students and families will create a learning space at home as part of their responsibility in the organization section of this plan. Teachers will use Google Educational Suite products as part of the instructional design and delivery. These responsibilities will be discussed at the beginning of the school year, the student school year, with students and families, and will be part of the professional development that's going to be front-loaded for our teachers and our staff. We've chunked out the structures and schedules for the students and raised plans. As you see, there will be a structured daily schedule for students that will be between five and five-and-a-half hours each day. It will look a little different for pre-K, K2, 3-5, 6-8, and 9 through 12. A daily schedule will also be created, and there are drafts in our plan for teachers and staff based on the contracts that we have in place. Assistant Superintendent Riley will speak to the schedule development process later in this presentation. We are confident that our teachers and our staff have the expertise and the capacity to provide students with a rigorous remote learning plan resulting in success for all of our students. We're now going to move forward with some details regarding our ELL students from Renee Koska.
Hi, good evening, welcome. As you know, our English language learners are important to us. On the screen in front of you, there's a breakdown at the currently rollover around our total number of students who are ELL, 744, that is about 12% of our district population. So as we look to service them, we have kind of, we did a summer program around the remote piece, and in that summer program, we had offered it to all levels, ones, twos, and threes, that had current access scores from January 2020. They participated in a program, a four-week summer school program that was all fully remote. There were 91 students who were asked to participate, and 74 participated in the four weeks. And at the end, parents did complete a survey of around some of the things that we're talking about tonight and what they liked around that learning. So some of the surveys, the parent feedbacks that we had was a successful remote learning experience. We had teams of teachers who presented mini lessons and then some interaction with students on the whiteboards, and then let them to work independently as they came back to wrap it up each time for each subject area. And we only covered the subject areas of math and ELA during the summer remote, which was only three-and-a-half hours during Monday through Thursday. The parents liked the daily routine, they knew what the schedule was like, the teachers had emailed the schedules ahead of time and when they would be online, and they were engaged in meaningful learning. Once again, our teachers in all our summer school remote programs had definitely stepped up to the plate, they had created wonderful lessons for those students, interactive lessons, and they were able to talk with their students on a daily basis, and students were able to talk with each other. This one parent comment that came from this parent survey that was under this question was that it was a much better learning experience than what we had in the spring, but that was also because we had planned out strategically how our lessons would run during the summer school. Another question, next slide, Lauren. Question was about the remote assignments. Throughout the four weeks, we had engaging and interactive, our hands-on learning activities and games, and project-based learning activities with a slash of review of skills that parents were, thought that their students could independently work at about 85% of the time. And so there was some help in the beginning. We had all hands on deck around making sure that all our students, even our first graders, were able to attend the Google meets. And again, there's another parent comment about how they enjoyed the remote summer school session, in that she enjoyed the face-to-face time with their teachers and the other students. So as we move forward in our remote learning, our ELLs will be serviced by our staff, our ELL staff, around the time the DESI has recommended for our students, with the same process around small group and individual instruction and independency time to work on things and come back to make sure that they know that they have mastered some of those skills. So our same process will continue in the fall, where a lot of our remote teachers for the summer were also my ESL teachers for the fall. Thank you.
We're now going to move on to information for special education from our director, Kim Woodford.
Kim, you're on mute. Could you please unmute yourself and start over? Kim, I still have you on mute.
There we go. I'm so sorry, thank you. So first, when we're thinking about special education and remote plans, obviously, there's a lot of other things that we need to consider. First of all, I want to say that 23% of our students in the Lemmester Public Schools have an IEP, and that could be a student having just one service to a student having services all day long. Many of our students who were able to be in the inclusion setting or had access to the general ed curriculum with maybe some accommodations, modifications, specialized support, which might mean a special ed teacher, co-teaching, tutor support, there's a variety of different ways that we were supporting those students, and we saw that we had many students that were able to access the curriculum. But having said that, we also know that many of our complex special needs students had a more challenging time accessing remote learning. Some of the feedback that we got from parents and from teachers was that attention and focus was very difficult for that population, that we really needed to have more curriculum options, and we also need to have some more technology options. So some good news is, is that Mr. Mamon from our IT department, who leads our technology department, wrote a grant for an assistive tech grant, and we are going to be able to have access to some additional supports and iPads and tablets for students. He's going to talk more about that when he does his presentation. So we recognize that our staff is going to need more training. Our staff is actually coming to us and telling us what they need, and so we're able to already put our hands on some tools and some resources and some curriculum that is going to be able to help them. Several of our staff have been attending webinars, coming back and giving us some feedback. We are already talking about some programs that we want to pilot right at the beginning of the school year. The young lady that spoke earlier, who was talking about the social emotional needs of students, she's right. We're going to really have to be prepared to support those students, not just our students on IEPs. It's really going to be looking at the tier services and supports that we can provide for all students. So we are all aware and very grateful that our school psychologists, adjustment counselors, are going to be joining us and supporting those needs. So one of the things we had to do in special education as we moved to remote plans back in March was that we used this form called an N1. It's a narrative tool that talks about what the school district is proposing. We use it every time we write an IEP, we use it every time we meet with families, we use it every time we're communicating any kind of change. And it's a necessary tool. But one of the things we think is really important as we move forward is that we really have a remote plan that's going to really highlight not just what teachers are saying that they're doing, but really making sure that parent input is documented and having a richer conversation. So I did put together some examples. I just want you to know that these are examples that I'm going to be sharing with my coordinators, with my special ed teachers, and related service providers, and there's definitely going to be more information and more feedback in these tools, but I think at least we could be thinking about that parents will know that they're going to be getting a remote plan that's probably going to change over time, because even if we go to a hybrid learning plan, we are going to try to do as many services as we can during the school day. But for students who have a large amount of services, we might still be doing some things remotely. So on the next screen, I have a couple of little examples. So we really want to have a plan that helps the parent really visualize what their child's school day might look like, and then talk about the services that students have. Our goal is to provide all services for students, and we want to be able to talk with families about what's going to work for their child. Obviously, scheduling is going to be a big piece of this, and hopefully, when we're doing our professional development, that'll be a great opportunity for teams to meet together and to talk about scheduling. But here's just some examples of way a student might get their services and that the parents will be getting this after they've been able to provide some input. The next slide is talking about more of our sub-separate programs, which, you know, are just going to look much different, because those students have a much more robust special ed service delivery. And so thinking about how we're going to supply that support. Obviously, if there's a teacher in the classroom wanting to get face time with all of those students, how is she going to make sure she's doing that every day? And what will it look like with tutor support? And what will be the curriculum that will be provided for those students? So as you can see, this could look for one student, this isn't going to be the same plan for every student in a subset program, because some students don't need physical therapy or occupational therapy, they might be getting another service instead. So again, very individualized for each student with parent input. So the next thing that I wanted to chat a little bit about, because we had been getting some feedback from some families worried about team meetings, and it took us a while to get ourselves in a place where we had the right protocols, the right resources in place to start having virtual team meetings, and we started doing that after April. We were just so thrilled that we had the parent buy-in, we were able to have many meetings, and because that parent input, again, I can't, that's the big piece of special education and what makes it work, when parents and teachers are working together and have input. So we're going to continue to do that. We're going to continue to do it remotely, at least at the beginning of the school year, just to decrease the traffic in the school. We'll make sure if families do not have technology or they do not have resources, we're certainly working with individual families who want parents to be a part of those meetings. Moving forward, we're going to continue to schedule meetings for all of our initials, our annual and three-year reevaluations. So that's the other question that I've been getting a lot of, is on the next screen, is parents asking us, when are the evaluations going to start? As we were reaching out to families in the spring, we really just didn't have the tools to be able to start evaluating students, we really couldn't even imagine what that was going to look like. But, and families worked with us, we were able to say to them, we're worried that this is not going to be a valid assessment of your child, can we please wait until the fall when we're doing face-to-face? Well, we're not there yet, so now we've got to have another plan. One thing that our department did very proactively is that back in February, we started talking about using technology for testing. There's some tools that we can use that can be transitioned into tele-assessments. And so we're already ahead of the game, because we've already done, purchased some of this equipment, we've already talked with our school psychologists and speech therapists, who may be using most of those tools, as to, you know, a buy-in. They were already saying, go for it. So all of those things have been ordered. We're definitely going to have to do some training. We actually already have a trainer who's going to be working with our staff that we've already talked with about how she can help us, even if we have to do it remotely, she'll be able to do some training with us. And it's, the commissioner actually recommended this person, Q Global, so I feel great that we are already considering that. We hope, as time goes on, we can start thinking about doing some face-to-face assessments. All of that is going to depend on next steps, because there definitely are going to be some students who are going to need that kind of assessment to really get the data that we need. I think one of the things, one of the aha moments that all of us have had through the idea about evaluation is, especially for those students who are going to have a three-year evaluation, these are the students that we can really answer that question. Does the student continue to need special ed support to access the curriculum? We've got that data. We know what that, what it looks like. We may be able to talk with parents about waiving some assessments, because we may have enough data to answer that question. Again, parents will have a lot of say about what that assessment will look like. It's a little trickier with more of the initial evaluations, but again, we'll be talking with families about, here's an option that we have, and will you consider letting us use this form of assessment? So I'm looking forward to partnering with families and getting input, and I'm excited to see my staff soon, so that we can start doing some of this planning.
Okay, this is Lorraine. I'm going to stop sharing my screen right now, and we're going to move along to Steve Mamon, the Director of Digital Learning.
Steve, if you're speaking, you need to unmute yourself, because we cannot hear you. Can anybody hear him? I cannot.
No, I can't even, I...
Steve, we can't hear you. It looks like you're unmuted, but we can't hear you.
I can't see him on the little screen. There he is. I see him now.
Okay, even the technology director has technology issues. So we're back. I was saying, I was very excited, because today was the first day that we have our building-based technical support back in our buildings. They were off for the summer, and so we are, they are hitting the ground running, they're starting to do inventories, and as Kim Woodford was saying... And as Kim Woodford was saying, we did receive a state-sponsored Technology Essentials grant. The details are going to be released at the state level first, and then I'll be able to share those with the committee. But we're very excited about that, and that will help us in our attaining our one-to-one program. All of our students that are enrolled in the Lummester Public Schools will have a one-to-one device. And we're currently working with our tech support staff at the buildings to come up with a distribution plan. Since we're remote, the plan will be building-based. We started distributing Chromebooks in the spring last year. That, that distribution model, we are going to scale up and we will be following that similar model from the buildings to that. One of the things that our tech directors across the state are having difficulties with is the supply model, right? And what is available? We did get in line quite early, thanks to the city and the purchase of those 1,500 Chromebooks. We are already starting to receive those Chromebooks, which is great news. Some of the cities and towns across the state are getting October, November, and even December delivery dates on those. So we will build our distribution model based on as the supplies come in, but we're, we're looking pretty good for that. We're also currently working with our curriculum product vendors and to support all of the products from the Google Suite to the things that we need for our curriculum, such as wonders at the elementary level. And we're making sure that we have agreements in place with all of them in order to hit the ground running and so, and start off the school year with our products. I'm working with, we are currently working with the union to survey our teachers and around the professional development so that we can adequately plan the 10 days before school. And then finally, I think I talked about this last time, but we are building a support for teachers, students, and family members that need support. And that's going to look like the Help Desk, and it's going to look like resources in terms of videos, accessing, accessing those videos, and then even phone calls to families if they need support around their technology. So I feel good where we are and we're excited about the, the future. It's, we're a little nervous about it, but we're very excited about it. So that's all I have for technology. Thank you.
I believe we're now going to move to Assistant Superintendent Riley.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. So I was going to speak a little bit about two items. The first is we, just to touch upon building safety, and specifically, I think I'm on the agenda to speak a little bit about ventilation, which was mentioned earlier tonight. One thing I would want to share is that our work is always ongoing, and this is going to be a continuous process as we look at our buildings and try to make them as safe as possible, both for our staff and of course, any students who will be returning to them. One of the structures we've put in place with the union from the very beginning are subgroups that, that address specific concerns that they had shared with us. And we actually have an LEA subgroup on building safety. We met with them most recently on July 31st, and we met with them for, I think, more than two and a half hours. And during that meeting, we not only shared some of the things we've done to make sure we have the equipment to keep our, our buildings sanitized. In this case, a lot of that is purchasing what they call foggers that have the ability to disinfect rooms in the course of about 10 minutes. And then even though there's no, no harm, that can happen to people who are actually still in the room, we'd have about probably another 10-minute buffer period before people could return the room and it would be fully sanitized. So sharing details like that. And then specifically, we gave them updates on the ventilation systems in our buildings, specifically at the high school in Fallbrook that had required some, some work. I have, and I just want to be clear, all of our buildings, all of their ventilation systems are things that we're actively looking at and trying to make sure that they're operating to their capacity. And so one of the things we've done is I've charged Tony Shabirasi, who's our facilities director, to give me updates on where we are in all those buildings. We do still have some work that is left to do, specifically at Fallbrook. We actually had some good news about the high school today that we'll be moving forward with and discussing with the union. But we also do have, for example, some issues that we need to continue to address at Sammaset. So it's usually individual rooms that may have thermostats or vents that we need to work on. But we are aware of what those buildings and specific room needs are and are honestly in a, in a pretty good place at this point, making sure that the systems that are in place at our schools are going to be operating at their capacity. You know, we will continue to work with the union. And I will say that the way we left it after our meeting on July 31st was, you know, as the union gets more questions or more concerns, that we will schedule, schedule an additional meeting. I would say also that, you know, Steve mentioned professional development and how we're going to be working with staff when they return to school in emphasis. During those 10 days of PD, we'll be talking to staff about the safety protocols that are going to be put in place and also the things that have been done to the buildings that hopefully will put them at ease if they had any concerns around what's been happening in the buildings. The other thing I was going to talk about tonight and address is our staffing. And I thought it would be helpful to begin with really why we ended up in the beginning or at the end of last school year to feel like we need to make adjustments in our staffing level. And what I would share is that was really due to three primary reasons. The first of those reasons was the fact that there was budget uncertainty. And so we began in the school department to hear from the state through various avenues that the state had lost a great deal of revenue. And that is natural, I would think, during a pandemic. You don't have revenues coming in because people aren't working, people aren't spending. And those typical revenue streams aren't, aren't what they, you would typically expect them to be. Because of that, and some of the estimates, I think, and I think even the governor said it last week, when he finally commented on, on, on the budget and the impact on schools, were that the state would be down between $6 and $8 billion, I believe, in revenue. And so we had been told that the potential for us to expect between a 10% and actually a 20% cut in our school budget was quite likely. And with no guarantees and honestly, no communication from the state until last, I believe, what, last Friday, when they finally had said, this is what the funding level is going to be for schools, we needed to prepare based on our contracts and based on the law to have a staff that we may not be able to afford if we didn't act. You know, we understand, and I would say that the city was in the same position as we were. If the city doesn't know the revenue they're going to get from the state, it would be hard for them to also share to us to be able to assure us that we would have the funding we'd need for all our staff. And so we understand that that was the situation. So when we didn't have certainty around our budget, the two other things that impacted us was first, honestly, the law. And so there's a law that for all non-professional status teachers, you have to inform them by June 15th of whether or not we would have money to afford their position in our district. That's the law. Every district has to do that. And honestly, a lot of districts did. In our case, I would say we probably informed 90% of our non-professional status staff that we weren't sure of our ability to afford them because of the uncertainty around the budget. I would say that we did have some positions that we held on to, and we did hold on to those non-professional status staff because of the nature of the population they served and also the fact that they may have had a very unique license that we didn't feel like we could find elsewhere. So that's why we had to impact our non-professional status staff. On top of that, we had contract obligations. And so in our teacher contract, for example, there's a June 15 date as well, that if we're going to impact our professional-level staff, our PTS or professional-status teachers, we need to inform them by June 15th. That's again, a protection for those teachers that they can understand going into summer that their position would not be assured going into the next year. Both our tutor contracts and our paraprofessional contracts have similar language around the June 15th reference date. We did talk to all of our unions. We asked them if they would consider an extension to these timelines based on the budget uncertainty. But all of them unanimously, unanimously, excuse me, felt it was in their best interest to follow the contracts, which the district honored and honestly can understand why they want to go that route. I think in the, and I don't, I won't speak for the unions, but I think that in their mind, if some of their membership was going to be impacted, they wanted them to know as soon as possible. And so really, that's why we found ourselves in a situation where we had to look at those positions and, and make some very tough decisions. Before I talk about where we are currently, I, I do want to say a few words and first of all, thank the unions and all their members for being so understanding of us having to engage into this process. I mean, I feel very fortunate with the union leadership we have in all of our units. And we always are trying to work with them and keep them informed, but I think people have said it a few times tonight, this is an untenable or an unanticipated situation for so many things because of this pandemic. But they really have been, I think, really proactive and supportive in trying to work with us around a lot of these issues. I want to thank our principals, I think, who had to make a lot of difficult calls this past spring. Hopefully, they got to make some happy calls this, this last week as well. But they were understanding and tried to engage in with us in the process when we were making decisions about who might be impacted. I want to thank the cabinet that we have downtown because there was no way that we could have looked at the number of reductions we had to make. And honestly, the number of callbacks we've maybe been able to make in this past week without the support of all of them. And just lastly, quickly, I would like to thank Anne Pickering, Juan de Toledo, in my own office, and Kathy Cludier, who honestly has helped support so many people who have been impacted by these reductions through making sure that they could get unemployment over the course of the summer. And then finally, Wendy Larson of the city, who has worked with us as far as trying to negotiate maintaining folks' insurance coverage over the last two months and then informing them of the process if we're not able to bring them back, what their rights are. And so just, I, I just wanted to make that note because I think it's important. There are a lot of people who have done a lot of good work on a thankless task because unfortunately, you know, there are still people who were impacted by the reductions we had to make. So I would do want to talk about the fact that we've been able to bring some folks back and to try to frame the work we've done around those callbacks so people understand the process we're going through right now. We don't have sufficient funds right now just to hire everybody back. And so we're following a process that we hope is going to put us in the best position to be successful as we enter into this remote learning period. And that ideally is going to make us be able to meet student needs in the best way possible. So under our guiding principles, I think the first one is equity, and we share that. That can mean a number of things. One of them, or at least when we first started doing callbacks, that had to do with student need. And so we recognize people have talked about it tonight, the need for social emotional support. And so we called back our guidance staff, our school psychologists and ABA teacher because we know those populations and the kids are going to need that level of support. We looked at making sure that we had equity in our programs. Two good examples around that is we called back our, our English language learner staff and made sure that we had certified staff because of the, it's critical that those kids get the support they need. And then another example would be calling back staff at CTEI. We made sure that all of our, all of our shops had at least two instructors. If we didn't have a certified instructor, we've reposted those positions. And so those are examples of how we've been trying to maintain equity in our programs. And then lastly, I'd say that these final, not final, or this phase of callbacks, I would say, has been looking to make sure we have equity in our buildings. And so as mentioned earlier tonight, and these callbacks specifically have been looking to address class sizes. And so, you know, we have class size ideals that are set, you know, to maintain by school committee. And these callbacks have been looking to ensure that our K to, K to two level, we have a ratio of 22 to one. Our K three to five grades have a ratio of 25 students to one instructor. And that grade six through 12, we maintain a ratio of 28 to one. Another thing that we're trying to make sure when we do go through these callbacks is that folks have maintained their certification. It's really important when we're looking at our level of staffing that we have folks who are certified in what we're asking them to do. And then finally, just a thought, we have made sure Unit A or our teachers are a priority at this time. They were, they were impacted the most through numbers when we had these cuts. And I, you know, I hear Superintendent Deacon say it all the time, there's nothing, you know, more important than, than having a child in front of a teacher. And then, you know, although we acknowledge it remote right now, they're not going to be physically there. But our goal certainly is to make sure our teaching staff that has, is at a level and at a reasonable ratio between staff and, and students, that they can do their job effectively. I'd say today, we are at a staff level that ensures our success in a remote setting, and we're trying to be, build some flexibility for the ability to transition into a hybrid or a full in-person learning model. And those are the decisions that we'll continue to make as we're moving forward. I would like to thank the union and particularly the LEA, the Teachers Union, because they have worked with us around some of these callbacks. And one of the things we've looked at is trying to make sure that we can call back our staff who have been with us for quite a while. And so not only are the, the Unit A teachers the priority, but trying to back, get back specifically our professional-status teachers, folks who have been with us in some cases for 10 or 15 years. And so getting those people back really was a priority for us as we moved forward. And to do that, we've had to ask some teachers to work under a secondary license, and they've been willing to do that. And the union knew that when we talked about that, and that's, that's been an important piece. So the numbers to date, I would, I'm, you know, pleased to share that we've called back 14 of 15 eligible professional-status teachers at this time. We have also called back over 30, 34 non-professional statuses, which gives us close to 50. In addition to that, we currently have posted eight openings. Based on some of the positions that have also been improved, I would expect that number to go towards 15. And so all told, we're going to be looking at probably 60-plus positions that will be back into, back into the district. One thing I'd say about the need to make positional postings, sometimes that's been due to the fact that there might be licenser issues with, with, that we became aware of. And again, we're focusing on making sure we're hiring back certified staff and what we're asking them to do. And then there are some other cases that every year, we will naturally make some decisions where we want to go into a different direction. And so we have openings in some classrooms where we, we decided we wanted to try to move forward with a different teacher. Okay? Lastly, I just want to talk a little bit about how we're working with our staff moving forward. And one of the difficult things, and you know, we've talked about it, what an enormous task we've been asked to reimagine education. And I, you know, it's, there's so much. And honestly, a lot of times it's been frustrating from the central office perspective because what we rely upon is the state to give us guidance, specifically DESI. And some of the recommendations have really just been coming out to us in the past couple of weeks, whether it be facilities or guidance on remote learning. And so we haven't had the ability to interact as much as we would like to, but we really are poised into a position where we're going to be doing that a lot, a lot with groups moving forward. And that would be demonstrated best, I guess, to say that we're working with leveled groups at the elementary, middle, and high school level. And the first thing we're going to be doing is discussing the draft schedule that was in front of you tonight to see if there are any tweaks that need to be made or any concerns that we did not anticipate. But now that we know and we have a commitment to remote learning, that's the natural next extension of this work. The other thing we're actively engaged in, and Steve Mamonie spoke about it a little bit earlier tonight, is professional development. And so that's a committee we've met with a couple of times. And really what we're trying to make sure is we're meeting teacher needs during those 10 days prior to school. I would say, and I'm extremely happy about this, and I had conversations with the president of the tutor and para unions over today, but also last week, we are also going to be soliciting input from those units as well, and they will be participating with us for a minimum of six or seven of those 10 days. And so we really feel like we're going to put together a great plan that not only gives people professional development in the areas they are telling us that they really need, we're also going to have time for these units to work together. And so we make sure the tutors and paras that we do have on our staff are going to be prepared to support teachers and students. be prepared to support teachers and students in the remote format. And I can tell you through conversations I've had with both of their presidents, that's what they want as well, and they're the ones who actually have been leading that charge. So we're really looking forward to what those 10 days can mean and to put us in a great place when we actually launch into learning. I think it's September 13th. The last thing I'd say is we are beginning the process of negotiating with LEA, and we'll be looking at a memorandum of agreement, which needs to be put in place in all districts when you change kind of the learning format. I'm not aware of one of those actually having been negotiated at this point. So while I can understand there is a lot of apprehension and anxiety from folks around, you know, what, what needs to be done, I also think this district, we are poised, very similar to what is happening elsewhere across the state in these unprecedented times. And I have full confidence in our union leadership and our district team and our building administrators that we're going to do some good work from this point forward and be in the best position as possible to make this remote learning format very effective for kids this time around.
Thank you so much, Jim. As you can tell, there's been a lot, a lot of work around this, and we wanted to make sure that this evening, we brought the most comprehensive plan forward. So our goal has always been to prepare to reopen. So this plan for remote is down to the tiniest specks of technicality. We should be able to roll into a hybrid at any point in time when it is possible seamlessly, but it's going to take two things. Number one, we really need people to trust the Lemmonster Public School Systems. I've heard from parents saying they just don't know if they can do this, they didn't have a great experience, maybe they want to try homeschooling. All I can say is, give us a try. Try a couple of weeks so that you can make an informed decision. And then if it doesn't fit your family structure, I completely respect that. The other piece is, we really need to partner with our families, be true partners, reach out to us, reach out to your administration, reach out to me. I try to answer almost every single email that I get. Some days are better than others, but we have to do this as a team. But it's going to take trust in order to do that. One of the pieces I do want to ask, and I know it will come up as an action item later on, the work around the remote learning has been in-depth, and we've looked at all of our options. And all administrators are looking at alternatives whenever possible. I would like to ask permission from the school committee to start to explore, maybe we could call them mini hybrids, or clinics, or possibly appointments for our high-risk groups to start, around our special education programs and services and assessments.
Yeah.
Specifically, CTI, or, you know, our students in the VOTEC program, these are hands-on learners. They, they do amazing things in their projects around the city and in our buildings. They're, they're a resource for us. LCE has a pretty unique dynamic that they, you know, they're still meeting off-campus right now. And the last group that I look at are the newcomers to Lemmonster, are students that literally drop here with no language. To hand them just a computer and say, please navigate this. So we have some of these programs. I just want to explore what we possibly could do for them in an appointment or a clinic setting as we move forward. But I know that we will be able to do the best we can through remote, but I truly believe in in-person learning whenever possible. And I'm hoping that these conditions will pass sooner rather than later. But in October, if we have a chance, I would like to bring a smaller version of a hybrid plan forward with your approval. Thank you. We are open for questions.
I can't hear you, Eileen.
I'm sorry. I'm going to call in people individually, and I'm going to give everyone a chance to talk. Isabel, would you like to go first, please?
I want to thank you all for your really great and comprehensive presentation. My first question, I guess maybe this is for Jim. I know that the school committee was asked to participate in a meeting with some members of the LEA subgroup on the ventilation systems and their findings through their MTA organization. And I was definitely concerned by the MTA's findings, and I appreciated Tony sending out what he did today of their findings from January in both of those buildings. That led to my decision-making process. I mean, our buildings, we can all agree, are very old. They may not be the cleanest, and their ventilation systems probably aren't working as properly as they should, just based on their age. And so I'm just wondering if there has been tops on cost and also timing for when we can get our buildings back to their best, best shape possible going forward with the ventilation issues that both yourself and the LEA have addressed, and whether or not we can make those reports. I've definitely heard from some parents that they're concerned about that as well, if we potentially move to a hybrid model later in the year.
Sure, Isabel. I think when, just to give you an update, I'd say that at Fallbrook, they've done a great deal of work, and it's been ongoing since that report first went out. And so that report has been people going into the rooms, making sure their unit vents aren't obstructed. And then they've actually done some diagnostic work to make sure each room has an operational unit and a functioning thermostat. And so as an example of where we are, I'm going to just read from notes for a moment for you. At Fallbrook, Renad, which is the company that we're contracted with, they do a lot of our servicing needs, they've completed servicing all the classroom units and thermostats. Right now, four thermostats have been found that need replacing or on order. All the unit vents are on and running correctly. Right now, and I think one of the issues in that report, and I know, I think almost the entire school committee was there when we heard that report from the union a couple of weeks ago, there were, one of my major concerns when we read that, heard that report was the number of units on the roof that weren't operational the day they were out there. And so what we want to build is the capacity to make sure, you know, when I talk about our ventilation systems, it's important, you know, you made the point of, look, some of our schools are old. And yeah, a lot of our ventilation systems aren't going to have the capacity to run certain filters or things like that. We are well within the DPHH recommendations of the filters we can run for a lot of our systems. And so we actually exceed them in some cases. But for example, at Fallbrook, they have identified there are seven of the units on the, on the roof that will need to be repaired, and we have put in those orders.
Okay.
So they will, they will be serviced. It's a challenge. I'll say the biggest challenge in some of these cases is getting parts for systems that are somewhat antiquated. And so those parts are on order, and those, that, that has been set up, that they'll finish that last piece. When I spoke about that safety meeting, Erin O'Toole, who set up, and Sandy Cuciara, who set up that meeting that we all attended to review the results of the high school in Fallbrook, Erin, I think, and Erin can speak for herself, but I think she was pleased with some of the things that had already been done. And that is the last piece at Fallbrook we need to take care of. At the high school, there has also been some significant work. We actually had a vendor in this past week, ABS, who manages the system as well. They've diagnosed the rooms that were identified, just to see if they're, if they could look at some of the issues that might be causing that. And they actually just sent out a report, and that I'll have to look at with the union. They would still potentially have to have a recalibration of their system. What we were addressing, though, is the CO2 levels.
Right.
And we feel like in those rooms, that work has been accomplished. There may be a greater need, and you were asking about timewise, there may be a greater need to have a larger recalibration of the system, which would require us, and we are prepared to go out to bid on that.
Okay.
Because that could be a major expenditure.
Yep. And so are we able to make any of these reports public? And I know the LEA had theirs, and so I wasn't sure if they wanted to do it themselves or if it's something that the public schools can put out. Because I definitely have heard from some parents who are also concerned about that report, having it been brought up a few times this evening and then prior. So I just wanted to know if that's something we could do as well.
I honestly don't know.
Okay.
And so let me, let me look into it. I, I don't know who the appropriate person would be to contact. I don't see, I guess, I'm not, I'm not sure about the reporting mechanisms to things like that. But I think you can see how I'm talking about it tonight is no, certainly not trying to hide anything.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
We're going to, we're going to respond to any concerns and try to make sure that these buildings are where they need to be. I've been pleased, honestly, in working with Tony over the last two and a half weeks since this kind of got on my radar, with the response of our custodial staff and his response in getting people in to do the work. And so I feel like we're, we're pretty well poised to, to address all of the concerns. There may be that lingering piece at the high school that will be a larger expenditure to calibrate the system, but I don't think that that, that will be needed to address CO2 levels. I think that's already been rectified, at least from what I can understand from the report I was given today.
Yep. And then lastly, quickly, I'll wrap up with this, and it is, the ending statement will be a question. So I just want to say that the reason why, and partly why, I voted for the remote learning model, and part of my reasoning is because I believe that it would be safest and that we would be able to allow smaller groups, such as our special ed population and CTI populations, back into the buildings because we would be at a lessened capacity. And we did not have an opportunity to discuss that at our last meeting. So Superintendent, I am in support of those like mini micro hybrids that you have discussed. And so my last question is on the scheduled piece of the remote learning day. I guess my concern is for those working families, and I know in the spring, having a mother as an educator, I saw a lot of students working after the school hours because that's when their parents were coming home from working a full day and helping them with the school day. So I don't, I just want to ask, like, is that schedule mandatory? I know we are trying to do consistency and make it far different than it was in the spring because a lot of people had concerns and issues with that remote learning type setup. So I just want to know what, what that's going to look like.
So I'll speak to that, and then we can, if you want to ask certain principals, because it'll look different at every level, we certainly are taking that into consideration. We've been, we've been more worried about the students that don't have that, you know, typical little place to work and the structure and someone to support them. So we will be working with individuals on what's happening, but we heard loud and clear from our families that they were looking for a structure, some type of platform. But the name of the game this year is really all about flexibility and being nimble and being able to move because we need to give students what they need. So we will still be working on that, but we need to hear from our parents, you know, who needs specialized attention for us to be able to move that forward.
Thank you. That's, that's all I have, Eileen.
Great. Thank you, Isabel. Dean, would you like to go next? Dean, if you're still with us, would you like to go next? You need to unmute yourself.
No, I'll, I'll pass right now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dean. We'll move on to Mike.
So basically, what I wanted was pretty much what Isabel just said. I, I do agree that I think for the majority of students and the majority of teachers, the structure will, is going to be important. I just, there are going to be some students who can't do stuff synchronously for one reason or another. So I just wanted to make sure that we had, that part of the plan is an element of the plan to accommodate students who can only work asynchronously. And also, as Isabel said, you know, now that we have very few people in buildings, I mean, it really is, safety is about a numbers game with this virus. So if we identify groups whose needs require some time in the building and you bring that plan to us, I would be willing to support.
Okay. We can bring that forward at the next meeting?
Yes.
Great. When we're done, we'll need to take a vote on that, but at this point, let's hear from other people. Brandon, would you like to go next?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, everybody. That was a lot of information to take in, but I appreciate all of it. It's very helpful having this in front of us now. Hearing from parents over the past couple of days, one question, kind of more of a minutia question, but still an important one, is looking at the schedule for the day, it was brought to my attention, how, how were like the specials art music going to fit into this? I know in the younger grades, that they're kind of outlined more specifically with a block, but looking at the high school schedule, there's not a specific block for that, obviously, because the high school function differently. So I'm just wondering if we can give parents kind of an idea more specifically of how that will work.
Sure. May I turn that to Steve Dobzinski? Are you still on?
I am, and good luck because we are in the midst of a horrific thunderstorm here in the chair city.
Okay.
So it's coming down route two, and I just jumped out of my chair, so my apologies.
Okay.
Brandon, to answer that, it would be treated as any other class. There's an opportunity, we do not feel we are cutting back on any of our courses. We're cutting back, obviously, from seven classes to five, but there is still an opportunity to take your art class just like you normally would take your English class. So it will be built into the regular course day schedule. We are in the process of developing that schedule right now. We've had to revamp it, which is a good thing because we got so many people back. So it would be just normally like it was when you went through high school. Those courses would just be as part of the, part of the day.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just one other question. There was talk about this a couple of months ago in March when we switched to this, this remote model, and I just want to make sure it's available to people still going forward. We're going to have one-to-one for every student, but obviously, internet capacity issues are still going to be an issue. So will hotspots still be available for those that need that?
Yes, they will be. So when, when we reach out to families, they will be communicating with the buildings, who then will come back to the IT team. So yes, that is available.
Okay, great. And I just think as well, bringing the, the micro hybrids or appointments or however we want to define them or name them, I guess, is a really, I think we need to take a strong look at that. You know, we've identified some populations that, you know, really need that hands-on, in-person experience, and I'd be happy to support them.
Thank you. Great. Thank you, Brandon. Ron, would you like to go next?
Sure. Yeah, I am muting myself. I agree with what Isabel and Brandon and Mike were saying. My only question is that I agree, well, the mini hybrids, you know, because we, as Paula was saying, the superintendent was saying, we have to be able to make ourselves versatile and versatile and amenable to how changes are, whether we can advance or have to go backwards. I wrote myself a little note. There was one lady who was giving us a presentation, she was saying about the global, Q Global, it had been recommended by, by DESI, I believe.
Yep.
And I was just wondering, the cost for that, does that come out of what was sent from the state to here, or?
I can answer that for you, Ron. No, actually, that, that's part of our special education budget, and the reason that we really liked this service is that it's a little bit of a cost upfront because we need to give some technology to our specialists, but actually, in the end, it's a cheaper option because every time we test a student and we use a paper copy, it's $25. When we use the Q Global, it's $1.50 each time we test a student. So in the end... So in the end, it's going to be a cost savings, but right now, it's a special ed initiative and it'll be one of our, be part of our budget.
The other two questions I had was to piggyback on Isabel's questions about, when she was talking to, oh, Jim, Jim Riley, the, the repairing or restructuring of the, the filters in the buildings, is that going to come out of the capital gains money or is that coming out of, from the state? How is that going to be funded? I didn't make, my question doesn't make sense?
No, 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 I was, I'm sorry, Ron.
It's okay.
It makes sense. And so I was gonna, I was just trying to think of the best way to respond. I think that in, for the bulk of the, the money, and Melanie Michaels could probably answer this better than me, it's actually going to come out of our facilities' regular budget. And so some of the people who are doing this work, like Renaud, who is doing the work primarily at, at Fallbrook, they're already a vendor provider for us and so we do have system, we do have money that we can allocate towards something like that. In the question of, like at the high school, we did have to get us another vendor ABS to come in and do that work. And where I, I don't know the answer, and is why I was shaking my head, is if we need to do calibration work at the high school level, that will be a bigger expenditure, all right? And so it would be more than $10,000, we estimate, and it would need to go out to bid. And so I don't know with an expenditure of that size, that would be something, my guess that Melanie Michaels would bring forward to the finance subcommittee and say, hey, you know, what's the best way to allocate funds to pay for this? Or we could quite possibly have the capacity just to pay for it out of our, our, our general fund for facilities maintenance.
Okay. And the other thing is I want to commend the superintendent regarding the mini hybrids to be able to provide service to, to needy students, both the needy students and the other students who are advancing, just so that they'll know that we are concerned and worried about them, worried about them and worried about their families, you know? And because the biggest concern I have is regarding health, education, welfare of everyone. We can't just be thinking of one small thing, have to think of the whole thing, you know? And it's a work in progress. But I do commend the superintendent with the, these plans they put forth tonight. I really, it was very, very informative, very informative.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ron. Peter, would you like to go next?
So first, again, you know, thank you all for the, the presentation. I think it answered a lot of the questions that were out there, both amongst the committee and the public. You know, one, one question I did have that hasn't been brought up yet, I was curious about with the ELL, if, I know it seemed like for the majority of families, it seemed, it worked out well, but was, there are certain group, and I'm looking more for age, like for younger kids that, you know, you know, English is, this is, you know, a lot newer to them. Were there any particular struggles in that group that maybe, you know, they're among the percentage that it wasn't so great as it went on, on the summer?
Hi, Paula.
Yes, Renee. Go ahead.
Yep. Hi, Peter. So no, we had our first graders up to 12th grade on our remote learning and yes, it took a little bit of work in the beginning around getting our first graders onto their Google Meetings because that'll be the first time that they actually used their emails and were able to do that. But through our PIC Center, Dr. Amara Cuevas, we had communication with our families, we gave them supplies and materials to be prepared for that, which we also are doing now at the district level for all our schools. So it, it went really smooth and those first graders were fun and they, they were reading complete sentences by the end of four weeks. They were sharing with their classmates and their oral discussion was great and they loved seeing everybody in the morning come on and saying, "Good morning, good morning, missy," you know? So they were engaged and that's, a lot of the comments that you, I had more comments than what I put on there, but a lot of the comments are definitely from our elementary. And our high school was very active, but they did a lot of theirs online.
Peter, did you have anything else?
Yeah, and then it's been brought up a little bit already, but for the synchronous learning, you know, I, I know the policy subcommittee's still got to work things out, but just thinking about things like, you know, students that in the middle of a synchronous learning session drop out for technical reasons and, and also possibly, you know, reviewing some of our true intimacy stuff, when we start to see patterns, hopefully it doesn't happen, but, you know, for students that may try and use that as an excuse, because I think for the spring, some of the feedback we got were, you know, some students that had a pattern of not showing up for asynchronous learning. And, and so I guess that's kind of a broad question, it's more of a comment, but I mean, have we thought about that at all? Is there, is there a path forward on, you know, adding some detail to that policy?
Yes, actually, Peter, that's a great question. We were talking at the high school level just today about that, really needing to have a layer of support to make sure we have someone who can outreach the family, families so that we do get them on board. We, we don't know everything that happens in people's households, so in the spring, we did have staff that was able to go home, help students, get them what they needed. So we actually were talking about those positions just this afternoon, so we, we know we need to address that.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And I imagine that, you know, we're going to have to be flexible because
Right.
I'm not imagining every time a student drops out of their synchronous learning, it's because they're trying to skip class.
Right.
You know, there, there might be legitimate reasons, but, and then, you know, the last thing, and I know we, it's on the agenda, we're going to vote about it in, in a little while, but I would echo, you know, what's been said already by some of the other members. You know, we voted for a remote learning, you know, model as our, our primary focus, but, you know, as I said in my comments on the 30th, when we voted, you know, certainly, certain groups such as special education, ELL and, you know, CTEI, when, you know, they're in their trade programs and have to be more hands-on for instruction, I'm fully supportive of looking at those groups and, and trying to, you know, work in a blended model or a hybrid model, especially now that the schools, you know, the amount of people in the building at any one time is drastically reduced and so we can really minimize the risk to, to anyone.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Melissa, would you like to go next, please?
So a lot of information's already been answered, so some of it's going to be some general questions, some of it is just maybe thoughts as I'm thinking them through. So if I'm understanding correctly, about 60 staff we anticipate having hired back of the 270-ish that were slipped in June, does that sound about right or am I off with that?
Would you say 50, Jim?
So, yep, right now, our number of actual position return, I think we had 38 and, I got it right here, we had 14 and 34, which brings us to 48. And when I said 60, it's because we have about, I'm going to estimate between 12 and 13 open positions that we need to hire for.
But the funding is there.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I missed it.
But the funding is allocated for that many positions for this.
For those positions, yes. The other thing I'd share is in terms of actual teaching positions, the number was 104 non-professional status folks and 17 professional status. Those numbers are skewed a little bit because that doesn't include decisions that would have been just made around the budget. There are some other issues as well involving those, those employees.
Okay. Have we heard about our community eligibility provision yet or is there an updated timeline on that?
That will happen, yes. That will be at the end of August. We have an audit going on right now and those numbers have been submitted, so we will know further. Our food provider has, Chartwell has been doing an amazing job, so food insecurity will not be a problem for Lemonster at all. He is going all the way through until the start of school. There is a push to get the eligibility to expand. We're almost there. We're just about there, so we're hoping to qualify.
Okay. I think I'm very concerned about the special ed aspect of this. As a parent of some gen ed kids, but also special ed kids, I had really hoped, and maybe, maybe it's the way the motion was given to the district, but I had really hoped to hear a lot more specifics tonight about CTEI and sped offerings, really since March. The, you know, the tutors have been excellent, the liaisons have been excellent, but in terms of sort of the hands-on services, we have a lot of catching up that we need to do. And DESI has really been very, very, very clear that we have to provide as many in-person services as possible, whether we're going part-time, full-time, community-based, if people have to go into people's homes, DESI has been very specific that we have to do this. They're prioritizing preschoolers for in-person instruction, even if we're doing remote. Preschoolers are being encouraged by DESI to get in there, as we all know, the sooner you get services to kids, the greater their gains are. And I'm really concerned about, are we really providing a free and appropriate public education to all of our kids in the least restrictive environment? And if you've been to an IEP meeting or about 30, those phrases stick out in your mind. And then lastly, for all of our kids, as I see the schedule, our teachers are wonderful and I'm sure they're creative and they're going to provide all kinds of opportunities, but looking at it in black and white, when I see a five-hour stretch for a seven-year-old to be sitting in front of a computer, that's very overwhelming. So if there's an opportunity where we have such creative folks to have little OT breaks that, you know, show what stretching is and, you know, everybody gets up and everybody stretches and maybe takes away some of the stigmatism that goes along with sensory And just being creative and outside the box, I think that's a huge opportunity. I, I won't support any plan that does not include direct services to children right now. And I think one of the other things we need to think about as a special needs parent, we've said amongst our community for a long time, the general population is one car accident, one sickness, one anything away from needing special ed services. And now really, every child in Lemonster is in need of some intensive special need services, whether it's from the school psychologists or guidance counselors or social workers. So I also want to really see a push for not just our special ed kids, but any of our kids that are in need of some direct one-to-one support, whether it's from a health teacher, school psych, social worker, I want them to be able to reach out to a person directly to get services and also with the concentration on our incoming seniors who are going to need college prep, post-high school prep and training. We have a lot of other services that we all know we provide and we need to get a lot of kids a lot more than what I'm seeing on a piece of paper, realizing it's just a piece of paper and I'm sure there's more to it. There's that.
Point taken. Thank you. Thank you. Sue? Sue, you do need to unmute yourself, please.
I'm unmuted. Thank you. I, I thank you all tonight for the presentations. It definitely clarified a lot. And Jim, thank you for addressing the financial issue and the confusion around that because we all know it was contractual, why those pink slips were handed out when they weren't. So I appreciate all that. I think the one concern I had is that we really haven't heard from the high school in terms of specifics. You know, high school is just as important, if not more important, well, no, I won't say it's more important, but high school is the bridge to the future for many of these students. And I really haven't heard anything about the scheduling. We know that the curriculum's been watered down. They have certain courses that they have to take, you know, in preparation for college or whatever their secondary decision is. So I'm hoping we can hear something from the high school, CTEI, you know, because that is, it's similar to the special ed population. You know, the CTEI students need the one-on-one for their trades. So, I mean, can somebody speak to that, Paula? You said you were going to have administrators, so I, I would just like to hear from them.
Sure. Dan, could you please unmute yourself?
Hi, everybody. How you doing?
Hi, Dan.
Hi, Sue. Thanks for that. We've been working as a, as a team, both with the, with Paula and her cabinet, as well as the high school staff, going through plans, et cetera. And we realize that CTE, we have to get these students in front of their staff, in front of their teachers, to work hands-on. Because in order to receive a certificate of occupational proficiency for completing a certain number, they need a certain number of shop hours and related theory hours to get that certificate and their vocation. So with these hours and the certification of occupational proficiency in jeopardy, we're, we're, we're looking at the commissioner's reopening guidelines and coming, we've come up with a preliminary schedule that I know we're going to talk with Paula more about. That schedule would involve in-person learning for all four grade levels, but at a much reduced amount of time. The amount of time that these students would spend in front of their instructors in a, in a in-person learning setting would be about 35% of what they normally would get. And so we have what we call an A-week and a B-week schedule. The A-week schedule would include seniors and freshmen. The two groups would be separated by a 45-minute break in the middle of the day. So we would ask that the seniors report to the school at 7:30 and work until 10:30 in their respective shops and then they would leave the building. There would be a 45-minute intermission, if you will, to prepare for the freshmen and for the staff to have a lunch break. And then from 11:15 to 2:15, the freshmen would come in and they would get three hours of instruction. We feel that's critical at CTEI because these students are in what we call our exploratory program, where they get to explore all the different vocational programs. And after two quarters, they are able to select which program they feel they're best suited for and they want to join. And without that hands-on experience, remote learning, we just don't feel is going to create that experience that's going to help them make that decision. So this schedule of 7:30 to 10:30 for seniors, 10:30 to 11:15 for a break, and 11:15 to 2:15 for freshmen, would operate Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday. Wednesday, according to the state guidelines, would be a shutdown day where the students do not come into the building and the facility is cleaned thoroughly. That doesn't mean it's not going to be being cleaned each day while students are there. We'll still be wiping down surfaces, mopping floors, cleaning bathrooms, door knobs, et cetera. But that's how we see it working for the seniors and the freshmen. And then that would be A-week. B-week, the seniors and freshmen would be in their remote learning, which we've decided is all going to be remote, right? So they would not be in the building at all. And the juniors and the sophomores would come in and follow the same schedule, juniors in the morning, sophomores in the afternoon. This three hours of training per day will give the students 12 hours a week. And given a 10-week semester, they'll only spend five weeks in the shop, so five times 12 is only 60 hours. Normally, at the end of the year, that's 240 hours if we're not able to go, you know, back to a hybrid model, which, which allows us to go like all day in the shop like we have in the past. in the past. But hey, 240 hours is a lot better than no hours, and they had no hours during the fourth quarter. The other thing is, is that a lot of the unions and a lot of the, and the state will not recognize any remote learning as shop hours. The only hours these kids are going to get credit for is their related theory instruction hours. Those are typically taught during the academic week. And those related theory hours, they get credit for, they get about 200 hours over their junior and senior year, and the hours vary at freshman and sophomore level. So we'll still be able to get credit for the related theory instruction, but to add those shop hour credits is critical for them going out and earning their professional licenses in their particular vocation, et cetera. Just a couple other little things. With two instructors being in each shop, having the seniors in there in the morning, I want you to know, and get an idea for class size. Paula had asked about class size. It varies by shop, but a typical group of seniors is anywhere from 10 to 15 students. If we have two instructors, we can split those groups in half, so you'll have anywhere from five to, say, six, seven or eight kids with each instructor. And we have the utilization of outside spaces to work, which will help to keep that social distancing intact. The state guidelines also suggest these kids come prepared to work. Fully clothed, uniformed, safety glasses, safety shields if necessary. If they have their own PPE, that's great, but if not, the school's going to provide that. And we're going to be the only kids in the building, and the only, there won't be kids at the other end. There won't be kids everywhere.
Yeah, so Dan, I think at this point, we know, this is, we're in the planning stages, so we're going to get all of this down on paper, and we'll bring it back to the school committee for approval. But there's been a lot of thought behind this piece. We just, we're hopeful that this could happen. These students really need it, and they're important to us and our community. So we'll bring that back, Dan, okay?
Yep. Couldn't agree more. Hope that helps everybody.
Yes, thank you, Dan. Steve, are you available to speak to the high school schedule?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Ms. Kohler. You mentioned that you felt that the curriculum may have been a little, your words, and I don't think you meant anything negative by it, watered down. We are proposing, and again, this needs to go to the union for some discussion before we move on any of this. So we are proposing that we go from seven periods a day to five. I almost look at it as the opposite of watering down. I think we can get more in-depth if we go to these classes. As you know, we have been having seven periods, seven classes with six periods a day. We would drop one class a day. By going to five, those classes meet every day for their hour. So we would actually pick up time of those five classes. We had had this discussion prior to COVID about maybe cutting back a class and going to six. We feel five might be the option right now, and the reason being, regardless of how much we tried and what great effort kids had and faculty had and parents had in the spring, there's going to be some gaps. So I think spending the first, and we're down 170 days. So spending some time this fall, filling those gaps, finding where those gaps are and completing some of those, or closing those gaps, I think will help us. So going from seven periods to five, I think will be good. We still can offer, I would say, the majority of our courses. I, you know, the gentleman called in tonight, there's no intent to take away theater. There's no intent to take away anything. We are following the DSE guidelines. Some of those guidelines revolve around chorus and band, because of the nature of those activities, some may be limited. But everything that we have been offering in the past years will be offered in the years, in next year as well. So again, we're working closely with the union. I think there's a meeting this Friday as a high school working group to figure this all out. But, you know, I'm actually, I just think we'll have more accountability with fewer classes. Kids can get a little bit deeper in those subject areas, and I think it could be a win-win.
Thank you, Steve. John Vancilet, would you mind speaking about LCE briefly? John, I don't know whether you're there, but if you are, you need to unmute yourself, please. His mic, he just said his mic is not working. So I can have him write something up and send it back. Sorry about that.
Yeah, no problem. All right. I just want to reiterate that my concern at high school, to make sure these kids have the proper instruction, proper courses, so that they can be out there competing with, you know, other districts for college, in particular the seniors. So that's a concern, and I don't know that, but I've gotten a lot of feedback from high school parents, so I just want to keep that on the radar.
I just got my mic working. Sorry about the delay.
No, that's okay. Go ahead, John.
Okay, so Ms. Kohler, at LCE, I don't know how you aware, how aware you are of our program, but it's a lot different. We rely on a student-centered approach, and we also try to incorporate real-world learning into our curriculum. So every student has one advisor, and each advisor has 15 students. And that advisor works with the student, the family, and community mentors in order to develop an individualized learning plan. And that is in addition to any other learning plans they may have, like IEPs or 504s and the like. So our transition to remote learning was relatively seamless. I agree with what Mystiquin said earlier, and everybody else seemed to agree with, that we have some high-need students that really, in order to succeed, they absolutely need to have face-to-face time with teachers. So I would love to be able to bring some of those students into the building, or think outside of the box. And something I know my teachers are willing to do is to meet with students outside of the building in order to keep those relationships going and keep students engaged. I'm not sure what other questions you might have regarding our schedule, but I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Almost said, I mean. Okay, thank you. So I just wanted to, you know, reiterate that we really appreciate all the hard work that has been done by, you know, Dean, I thought you...
I said I'd skip it for now, that I have a list of questions, but I would wait. But that's okay, go ahead.
No, you can go ahead. I'll go last. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you tonight for everybody's input and the panel information. And especially thankful to all of those parents, because I do hear, I do hear a different school committee tonight, and I'm happy about that. That's, you know, sometimes a week or two can change things, but I think, I give a lot of credit to the parents. They spoke, and it's important to listen. They have good ideas. We are a very diverse community in many, many ways. We're a working-class community in many, many ways. And we, and those parents got a chance to communicate today using social media, emails, phone calls to school committee members. So I hear a different tone tonight, which is more of one of flexibility. Tonight, unanimously, the Pittsburgh School Committee adopted a hybrid model. And this is exactly what my comments have been right along, is we need, and I think I just, all I'm repeating is what I've heard from so many parents and teachers, is we need more options. We need more options that are more flexible to kind of cater to the different needs of families. And we've heard all of those concerns tonight. In fact, I'm with a committee member, Bible, saying, you know, I'm not ready to support a plan that doesn't specifically address and back up and account for those most vulnerable. And I believe that's what she said tonight, and that's what I'm sticking to myself. Now, what Pittsburgh's doing is, it's a, hey, you can opt in or you can opt out. You could do remote learning if you want, and then jump back into the hybrid if you'd like. And all from the beginning, all I was, I've been trying to sort of acknowledge and build support for is a more, is more flexibility. And so not forcing anyone who feels threatened by whatever it might be, or just in fear, or maybe somebody with a pre-existing condition on the staff side or students, but provide more options. And it sounds like we're moving in that direction. And, you know, we're going to be in a little bit of an unfair situation if the schools around us are going to a hybrid system and we're not. And think of the parents who've invested since kindergarten so much of their time into those students to help them get into college using public education, and just to reach those final years and not know, and have so much uncertainty. I would say Jim Riley did a good job tonight, and this is certainly not aimed at you, but what you talked about in the budget, as it relates to how we laid off people, that should have been communicated. And that's what I think parents were talking about, the transparency, is that should have been communicated back in May, and it's August. And so we've got to do a better job of getting the information out. And I think that's what parents are looking for. Now, for months, people have been talking about, parents have been talking about, what's going on with this, you know, air quality control in the schools? We should have stepped up and said, yeah, got some problems, working on them, here's what we're doing. In fact, I think we need to notify parents from here on in. When we do our Sunday report out to the parents, this is what's been done this week. So there's an accounting of this, so people know things are getting done, the staff knows things getting done, and it puts that trust back into us. Incredible amount of good ideas that come from teachers and parents. We are incredibly fortunate to have the caliber of parents that we have out there, and have suggested in the past, maybe a, something like a Lemester Education Idea Factory, where parents communicate in small groups and share ideas with teachers and staff about how to make this more flexible, how to make a hybrid system more successful. If you opt in, and for those that opt out and want to do remote, fine. But I think it's clear that parents want more options. And I think they've spoken, and I think other members have heard, and I'm happy that they're loosening up on their approach, and that's fine, that's fine, that's okay, that's what it's about. Making better decisions when you have better information.
Do you have specific questions? I just want to make sure that we get to your questions, Dean. That's why we still have all the cabinet members on.
Many communities have hired a company called Link, and what Link does is it helps communities. And many communities started getting ready, because they either anticipated remote learning or they just sort of wanted it as an option in an event that's, you know, going back to school full-time didn't work. But that is a company that, and there are others, who are professionals at helping communities adapt to remote and hybrid systems. And I suggest that maybe, we don't have much time left, that maybe is opportunity or a time for us to maybe connect with a company like that, because I don't know that, you know, we're now in, you know, halfway through the month of August, and we're running out of time. Also, I think we've got to look at some individualized personal areas, and that might mean that we might have to have something like the Peace Corps, which is Lemester's Education Corps, which is, you know, could be those who are paraprofessionals, could be students that are high school students that are doing very well and would like to help, and maybe retired teachers and college students that maybe are taking a year off to help promote and maybe tutor some of these students who are the most vulnerable. And maybe make a visit to check to make sure they're okay. So I think we've got a long way to go, but before I can support a plan, I really need to see that we are gone above and beyond in terms of addressing those that are most vulnerable. And then the last thing is, our feedback can't be based on, this is what I, what I heard this past summer, or this is the emails that I got. We need daily feedback. We need a piece of software built into the system, so there's automatic evaluation into how we're doing, so we can adjust and adapt daily. So we know exactly what the feedback is and how we're doing from each parent every day. And I know the software exists, companies use it all the time. When you call for service, they want to know at the end if they can ask you a few questions, and if you fill out a questionnaire. Getting that kind of feedback is paramount. We can't go just based on, yeah, we think we're doing, we think we're doing okay, we think we're doing great. When we say those things, that triggers off. My email, social media, all of this is open in front of me right now, and it just triggers people off to say, that wasn't my experience this past summer. So it can't just be that one dimension. It really has to be something that's set in place. So those are my concerns. And then the last thing was, that I believe the finance chair and the superintendent were going to report back as to what our savings has been thus far. Because of the layoffs, we should have, we should have a substantial saving, as in what might that be? And also what are going to be our savings on transportation? Because that is all funding that we can anticipate using to bring more people back.
Okay, thank you, Dean. So at this time, I just wanted to thank everybody for their presentation. It was very comprehensive. I think, you know, for all community members that are listening, this is a continued work in progress, and things are constantly being tweaked and addressed as situations come up. I am very pleased that we are going to be looking at allowing, well, if we vote on it, but I'm in favor of allowing, you know, small hybrid groups to come into the buildings, particularly CTEI students, special educational students, English language learners. I think it's very important for many of those students to have a hands-on approach, to have a teacher in front of them. Ideally, I would love to see that for all students. I think that that's something that we will continue to assess as we go forward. Everybody has really touched upon the various questions that I would have had. So we do appreciate the comprehensive information. I know it could be a little overwhelming, because it was very detailed, but at each of our meetings, we're going to expect more and more details to unfold and be presented to the community, as well as obviously the committee. So again, for parents to be patient, we are working as hard as we can, certainly the superintendent and her staff, to make this successful for everyone. I would echo, you know, Dean's sentiments that we need to think outside of the box. I heard on TV that in another community, the roller skating rink was going to try to open up as a sort of venue for kids to learn remotely under some supervision. They wouldn't be teaching, but they would be there sort of, you know, to make sure the kids were supervised. I don't know whether that's an option, because we have a roller skating rink right in our community that's not being used. We have the Boys and Girls Club, the Spanish-American Center. So anybody out there in the community that, this is a community, it takes a village, and we have a wonderful village in our city, and we need to come together to support our families in whatever way we can. So I just throw that out there for folks in the community. If you're able to help or assist, or come up with a creative way to provide for our students, we greatly appreciate it. So again, I echo Dean's sentiments, and let's be creative and get community members, you know, involved to help problem-solve and support our families. Not everyone has the ability, you know, due to work or other constraints, you know, to have somebody there in person with their students while they're trying to learn. So having said that...
Madam Chair, I was, Madam Chair, I did ask a few questions. I did ask a few questions about the finances on...
Right, we're going to have a finance report, Dean? And when we get to the finance committee, that's what would be addressed. So at this point, we've talked about the remote learning plan, the special ed remote learning plan, we've had a technology update and staffing update. We're going to move on to subcommittee reports, and the first subcommittee is finance. So my... So Michael?
So finance has not met since the last school committee meeting. We will be having a meeting next week. The members should expect to hear from me to schedule a date. I can answer Dean's question about savings. I think that's technically old business since the Finance Committee hasn't met. And I can do that an hour later as...
Why don't you do it now while you're at the floor?
There have been no savings from layoffs. The vast majority of our staff works September through June. So savings are not realized until the laid off employees make it to September when we would have paid them. Actually, there are costs over the summer. We have covered our portion of their health insurance. They had to pay their portion, but we have covered our portion. So that's a cost. And of course, because we've notified them that they're laid off, they immediately become eligible for unemployment. So that is another cost to the school department that we bear, not to the extent that they have done that. I don't have the exact numbers, but it is, it's significant. We've had to pay some unemployment much higher than normal. And we pay the health insurance. The savings start when they're not working from September on, and then we're not paying their salary. So at this point, so far, it's a cost, not a savings.
Okay, anything else? Go ahead, Dean.
Yeah, so there was $13 million, 30% of the workforce laid off to save money. So you're saying that 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 was the anticipated amount to be saved was from September until next June?
Correct. Our teachers work a 10-month contract, September to June. Most of the staff in the school is similar. There are, there are few staff members that would have worked during the summer. I understand we have a few like secretarial positions that are 12 months. But the vast majority of our positions are 10 months, September through June. And so you have, as Jim Riley explained, both the legal and contractual obligation is you must notify, you must lay off in mid-June if you can't guarantee their return in September. But you don't save anything until you're not paying them come September 1st. July and August, you don't normally pay them. So there are no savings. But there is a cost to covering our portion of the health insurance. And if they file for unemployment, paying for that. Both of those are general fund expenses.
Anything else, Mike, to report?
No, I mean, as I said, we were scheduling a, the the deal with this, you know, the deal that was, was mentioned last time at the state level hasn't been passed yet and hasn't been signed. So, you know, currently, the numbers are the same as they were, and we anticipate that will go through. And downtown has been quite busy preparing the plans they gave us tonight, and haven't really had time for being diverted into other things. But we will be having a finance meeting next week, where we'll see, get an update on where we are.
Okay, thank you. So Ron, finance, Policy Subcommittee, do you have a report?
Yeah, we had a meeting today on the review of the remote learning, and also regarding face mask policy. And Chris is going to be tweaking both of the, because the, the remote learning, we're going to be using a lot from MASC, which, which had sent us this. And I'm going to tweak it to make it working consistent with, with the district. And the same thing with the, with the face mask policy. She's going to be looking at a couple of other cities, I believe. But we're going to try, she's going to try, we're going to try and tweak it to make it consistent with Lemister's district. And we'll find out with the next policy meeting in another two or three weeks. And then we'll have a reading presented after that. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Ron. So now we go to the approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the July 6th and July 30th minutes?
I'll make a motion to, oh, go ahead, Sue. You getting ready to say?
So Ron, why don't you make a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the past, the, July 6th and July 20, July 30th. I make a motion.
Sue's going to second?
Second, right.
All right. Is there any corrections, omissions, or discussions?
I have one correction.
Go ahead.
The July 30th minutes on page three at the very top, it's what I was stating. It says Michael Stassen stated. So I didn't say they went up by 2%, not the cases. I said the positivity rate went above 2%. That's a slightly different thing. That's it. Other than that, I'm fine.
Okay. So if we have a motion in a second, all those in favor, I'm going to do just a voice vote, because I don't have everybody's on screen. Dean?
Yay.
Brandon?
Yay.
Isabel?
Yay.
Mike?
Yay.
Sue?
Yay.
Peter?
Yay.
Melissa?
Yay.
Ron?
Yay.
And I'll be a yay. I believe I got everyone. So the motion carries. Thank you. And we're going to move on to action items. Would someone like to make a motion for the superintendent to begin exploring blended slash hybrid learning opportunities for certain segments of our population?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a run. And Michael second it. So we have a first and a second. Does anybody have any other further discussions?
I do, if that's all right. The only thing I would ask is, you know, while we're looking at this, and then certainly, you know, Desi might have some guidelines, but making sure that we have a contingency plan in place in case we do have outbreaks, especially we have multiple outbreaks, which I think goes without saying, but I just want to make it clear that that's thought of in, you know, hearing about the CTEI, you know, situation in particular. You know, obviously, the public should understand if the state says things are closed down, then things are closed down in the future. But with CTEI in particular, having a contingency plan so that if kids are able to be in shop to get the requirements that they need.
This is Dean.
Thank you. Dean, go ahead.
I have, I highly encourage it, as I have in the past. However, that should absolutely include involvement by parents, parents of those most vulnerable, and teachers and staff. And I would like to have that included in the motion.
Chris, did you get all that?
Yes, I'll put it in the motions.
All right. So we're going to do a voice call vote again. Mike?
Yay.
Sue?
Yay.
Dean?
Yes, yay.
Brandon?
Yay.
Ron?
Yay.
Isabel?
Yay.
Peter?
Yay.
Melissa?
Yay.
And I'll be a yay as well. The motion carries. So our next committee superintendent, we would appreciate a much more detailed plan for which populations will be able to have access to the buildings, and what that will look like for them.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you. Now we're under new and old business. Does anybody have new or old business to discuss tonight?
Yeah, this is Dean.
Go ahead, Dean.
Yeah. So at the beginning of the meeting, I made a point of order, let everybody know that there are people trying to get in.
Yep.
You know, we beg to have more people get involved in our meetings. And our first meeting was a total disaster. And we promised better. And then we, we, you know, switched over to this forum, and because we could accept more people. And I think we, somebody, Madam Chair, I think it's you, that needs to explain at some point, again, transparency and communication, why people couldn't get on to the system. Shouldn't this system have handled it? The other issue is, if you look in our, if you watch our last meeting, the question was, how were we expected to, you know, we should be having meetings now in person. And I believe, Madam Chair, that you said that the next meeting, we would be in meeting in person. Now, I understand there may be reasons for that, but I think those need to be addressed. If not tonight, then first thing in the morning. Because I can't tell you how many people were trying to get on and couldn't, which meant that we have a public forum, and there were people who wished to make a comment at the public forum, but weren't given that right. And that's exactly what the public process is supposed to do.
So Dean, the, it's my understanding, and I think we did mention it after you said, that there is a limit of capacity that Google Meets can hold for a number of attendees, which is why a couple of weeks ago, we had moved to the Zoom platform, because that could, has a higher capacity of participants. However, since we were hacked, we made a choice that that was not a safe venue for us. And we went back to the Google Meets. But that's why we tried the Zoom, so that more people could participate. And unfortunately, that was unsuccessful. And we didn't have the same security. So we've gone back to Google Meets, and I don't know the exact number, but I know that there is a cutoff number of participants that are allowed in this platform, which is why folks were not able to, everyone get on. As far as our intention was to meet in person, particularly, I think that was prior to our vote, when we, I think at that point, I was expecting that we were going to choose a hybrid model, and people would be going back into the buildings. I was approached by a couple of committee members that did not feel comfortable going in person, given the potential number of participants wanting to attend in person. We would also have to limit much more severely the amount of people that would be allowed to be in person, given social distancing, and the space that we would be utilizing. So this format was the format that could support the most participants from the public. So if we hadn't done it in person, there were people concerned about health and safety risks, given the number of people who would try to attend, or who would like to attend. And we would have to severely limit that number. So that's why...
Did we put this out? Did we notify the public? And I'm worried about a violation of the open meeting law. So did we notify?
Point of order.
So the agenda, say that it was going to be remote, and that we were not going to be in person.
And that we were, we were going to limit the amount of people that could connect?
So it's not that we are limiting, it's the platform that's limiting.
Right. And you just explained that. But did we notify the public that we're using a platform that limits, I don't know, 134, 200, 300?
Well, I know that we had over 250 people on, so I'm not sure what the limit is.
Did we, did we do a public notification as part of the agenda that we're going to be using this Google platform, and it is limited? Because I think people were confused as to, we're holding a public meeting, and they cannot, A, connect, or B, speak in a public forum.
We had more people on this meeting than could ever fit in Apple Seeds. So do we have disclosed that Apple Seeds will only allow so many people to join our public meetings when we have it there? I mean, it seems to me it's just there's a capacity of the infrastructure, regardless of how you have the meeting, and only so many.
And there's not a platform...
Can I, can I interject?
I've been on many, I've been on many platforms that handle hundreds of people. And what I'm saying is, we are, we are a public board. We have the responsibility for whatever the system is that needs to be set up. Okay? And I understand we had to do this. I get that, right? But we have a responsibility that if we cannot provide the service, that we should at least let the general public know. Again, this is what, this is when people talk about transparency, this is the frustration. Everything happens and then leaves everybody in limbo, as to they don't understand what's going on. We're the ones that are supposed to be the leaders of the community, letting them know what's going. If we knew there was a limit in the capacity, we should have just told people that. This is an open and public forum. This is the open meeting law. That's all.
So no matter where we had the meeting, there would be a finite number of people who could attend. So Michael is correct, even if we had it at Apple Seeds or the auditorium, there would be a finite...
Forget that part. Forget that part. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about providing a platform that limits the amount of people and not telling them. Somebody has a responsibility to let the public know, only so many people can get on. So they know that. Forget, forget where we meet. We already decided we couldn't meet. Okay. But we're having a public meeting, and the public wants to, and the public wants to be able to comment and share their opinions because they're very emotional about something. And they can't, they deserve, they deserve notification, and they deserve to be told ahead of time. Not learning about this second or third chance. And I apologize to that.
I appreciate it. You've made a good point. I don't know the exact number of folks that are able to attend, but we have a finite, it doesn't matter whether we're meeting remotely or in person, there's only a certain amount of capacity, no matter who we're meeting. And I do apologize to anybody who tried to, Dean, I'm speaking. I do apologize to anybody who did try to get on and was unable to. You know, obviously, we have no idea how many people are going to try to participate. And we used the best platform that we could, given, you know, what we have available. So at this point, is there any other new or old business? Melissa?
Hi. So I just wanted to say thank you and congratulations to the graduating class of 2020. The ceremony was beautiful. And Steve Dubzinski and Barry Hudson and all of the others that were involved have all of my praise for a wonderful ceremony. And thank you to the weather for cooperating. With that being said, I'd like to make a motion that we explore a location where we can have a school committee meeting, and we're able to post the occupancy prior to the meeting. So we know what the limit is for attendance. And if people want to be able to attend that meeting remotely, then maybe we allow that as an option as well.
May I say something?
I second that. I second that.
Before we do that, we have to realize, any public or private meeting place, you can only have 50 people.
Right.
That came from the state. That's not us. So we have to even filter who goes to the meeting.
So we can set the capacity then at 50.
I want to say... Which would also include all of us and the cabinet members. So that would severely limit the public, because there would probably be a good 15 of folks that need to be there regardless. So then you're really severely limiting the public. So just putting that out there. And I also think that, you know, we do have people on our committee with health concerns. So that is also something that we need to take into consideration, which I was not aware of previously. Chris, were you trying to say something?
I looked into the auditorium to have the meeting in person. With the regulations, it allowed 64 people. And if the administration and the school committee took up, let's say there was only 40 spaces left for the public. And so it wouldn't have been a true public meeting. So we abandoned that one.
So, and I think, you know, we can have ongoing discussions about whether we meet, continue to meet remotely or in person. I know the city council, at this point, is still continuing to meet remotely. But it is something that I want to make sure that all committee members, you know, are feeling comfortable with. And maybe Chris can send out a survey for the committee members to get a sense of where people are at.
Okay, well, Madam Chair, there's a, there's a motion and a second.
Yes, I know, Dean. And we're still finishing up with the discussion. And when we're done, we will vote on it. Does anybody else have anything else that they would like to add?
I would, I think it's already been implied, but I think that meeting, I have nothing, oh, Chris can send out a poll, but I mean, personally, I don't have a problem with meeting in person. But I think it defeats the purpose to meet in person if we want more people to be involved. I understand that there's a cap here, but we're going to limit it even more by meeting in person. in person. I mean, I just want to make sure that's blatantly clear. I think it was implied already, but just stating it.
Okay, thank you, Peter. If no one else has anything, I'm going to do a voice vote.
So just to clarify, the motion is that we're looking into the possibility-
Can I just get clarification? Can I get clarification from Commander Ma Bible that you, that I thought I understood you to say that this is in addition to the Google platform?
Correct. I said that we would explore locations where we could have a public meeting and use a Google platform for those that could not attend.
All right, and that's why I seconded it. So I agree 100% with you.
All right, so Dean, we're gonna have a voice vote, so why don't you go first, since that's-
I'm a yay.
Mike?
Yay.
Sue?
Nay.
Brandon?
Yay.
Ron?
Oh, it's a bad mix. Oh, I'll go for it, but I don't, I don't buy it.
So Ron, you either need to be for it or against it, you can't be both.
I know, I know, I know, I'm, no, I can't go for it, because it's, we're defeating our own purpose. No.
Okay, so you're gonna be a nay?
Nay, nay, nay.
Isabel?
Yay.
Peter?
Given the clarification from Melissa, I'm a yay.
And Melissa?
Yay.
And I, I'm gonna vote nay, only because I know that some people have difficulty on the, on the committee, but I certainly have no problem myself meeting in person. So the motion carries, so we will look into that as a possibility. All right, any other new or old business?
Yeah, just one last thing. Whoever wants to go there. I, I just wanted to make sure before we left the meeting, I know another survey is gonna be going out, and so I think what, what, you know, at some point, we need to know who's coming back to school. I've heard parents already, this is, this is not just hearsay, it's for sure, that they've moved their kids already, enrolled them into, into parochial schools, or they're gonna homeschool, or whatever it is. I, I think we need to know exactly who's coming back to Lummens Public Schools, and the sooner we know that, the better, so we can better plan. And so I know there's a survey going out. When will that go out? When will we know that information? And yeah, that's, I just wanted to make sure we explain that before the end of the meeting.
Okay, that's going out on Wednesday morning. Peter, did you have something? Or I thought I saw somebody else's hand go up.
Yeah, I do. So I'm not sure what the proper avenue would be for it, but I'd like the committee to look into what the recourse is, if we have a committee member that consistently, and has a history of mischaracterizing and sometimes, you know, lying about things that go on within the committee meetings, especially considering that that member has a platform that they are able to put out information that, you know, was brought up today, that they're, they are one of the main sources of being responsible for putting out into the public. And, you know, for that, I'm talking about the layoffs and why. And I, I would, I'd like the committee to look into, you know, recourse for such actions.
Okay, duly noted. I think that it's important for all committee members that you are part of the committee, and we need to support the will of the committee, and we should not be working against each other or sabotaging each other, because we are representatives of the committee, of the whole. Certainly, people might have a personal opinion, but when we do vote, we need to act and go with the will of the committee. Everybody has a chance to express their own viewpoints during our meetings, and people should not be, obviously, using other platforms for their own personal agendas. So we can take, you know, and, and talk to MAS C and Legal, Peter, to see, you know, I don't know what we can do about that, but we can take a look at that.
And I just have one item for new or old business. I just, for transparency purposes, I think it's important to let the public know that Pittsburgh Public Schools did not vote for a hybrid model. They will be going to remote until October 15th, with the exception for special education and ELL students. So we just want to make that public.
Great, thank you for clarifying that point. I appreciate that. Anybody else have anything that they would like to add?
Yeah, I have something to say. If that, if those remarks were aimed at me, and if someone's trying to take my constitutional, my constitutional right to express my opinion and free speech, I have a huge issue with that, and I, 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 I hope and encourage you to seek legal counsel, 'cause, 'cause I will. And if there's anything, excuse me, excuse me, if there's anything that I said tonight that is untrue, then you get your backup information about that, you back it up, and you get it to me. Other than that, that is my constitutional right to express. I've been there for 27 years, I've lived here all my life. I've earned the right to share my opinion based on facts.
As an individual-
Point of order. 27 years of experience in the city of Lummens, sharing my experience throughout the state with not only school departments, but police and fire and administrative along the way. I think I've earned the right to express my opinion in any capacity that I wish. So I encourage you to seek mass association of school committees, legal counsel, anyone you will, 'cause I will on my own.
So Dean, just part of our protocols and bylaws are that we represent the committee, and when we are representing the committee, we represent the will of the committee. You can express your opinions, but not as a, as a committee member if you're going against the will of the committee.
I am, excuse me, excuse me, I am the only member that is the mayor and a, and by law, I'm required to be on the school committee. But I, I also, I also have my oral duties and my oral responsibilities. That's why the city charter specifically says that the mayor will sit, shall sit on the school committee.
Right, you just need to make sure your position is reflecting of whatever-
Madam Chair, I am not gonna argue with you about this tonight, but it is all taped, and I will deal with it correctly, okay? And, and, and everything is taped, everything is recorded, and I'll just leave it at that, at that.
So does anybody else have anything else that they would like to bring up under new or old business? Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn? Motion, Melissa? Brandon, a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone.